We are live. Okay, great. I'm gonna just take a couple of seconds to let people file in.
It's okay, Stephanie, don't cry.
I think I'm getting like dry eyes or something.
Weather change, it's it's being strange out.
Okay. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on March 10th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on March 10th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hale, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible indivisible with liberty and justice justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Woman Canavera? Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Good evening here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovir?
Here.
All right, council members, does anyone have any questions on the agenda for this evening?
No.
No? Okay, then we'll move on. At this moment, for honors and awards, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Council President Phil George, who is going to make a dedication in honor of our lovely Mary Denver. Councilman President?
Thank you, Mayor. This dedication, it's not a proclamation, but a simple dedication of the native plant sanctuary to Mary Denver. She's one of the primary volunteer stewards of the Native Plant Reserve, which is actually now the Native Plant Sanctuary, along with Belinda Beatham, Sue Edmonds, and Andy Warren, her trusty sidekicks and volunteers. She and the volunteers not only generously donate their time to real hands-on maintenance of the sanctuary, but they also work with many partners in the borough, applying for grants, recruiting volunteers, and hosting community planting and cleanup at the reserve and along the Raritan. Mary is also co-leader of the Highland Park Native Plant Society, which celebrated its 12th anniversary recently and is also one of the more active chapters of the state Native Plant Society. Highland Park's chapter is one of the first chapters in New Jersey and the longest active chapter in the state. The Native Plant Society brings together people who love our native plants, our state and our area along the Raritan to learn about them through informative speakers and programs. She's also an active member of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and assists the committee with the annual tree planting projects, the planning, the budgeting, and the tree canopy initiatives. I salute Mary. I've known Mary for a long time. We first actually met in the woods at the Native Plant Sanctuary. I do a lot of volunteer work on Sunday mornings there, and we always have a chance to chat. We look forward to her being able to come back to work. And we're coordinating with her remotely for DPW's reopening of the Native Plant Sanctuary, everyone coming up soon, and we'll be looking for volunteers to help us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. And Mary's welcoming smile and get up and go kind of can-do attitude are an inspiration for all of us. Thank you, Mary, for all you do for Highland Park. Alrighty. I'm gonna go right into our council reports, and as usual, I'm going to go in the order of how you appear on my screen. So Councilman Matt Hale, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. So after a two-year hiatus, the Highland Park 5K run is back. The run is gonna take place on May 1st from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. There's kid races and prizes. And also, as I mentioned last week, there's a special recognition prize for those folks who are finish ahead of my colleague Councilman Matt Hirsch. I'm also announcing tonight that there'll be another special recognition prize of anybody who manages to be behind me in the race. That's a special prize because I'm really, really slow. So I really do hope you're gonna get as many people as possible out to run in the 5K. It's so exciting to have this back. And it coincides with our Spring Street Fair and Earth Day celebration, which are also gonna take place on May 1st. So the race is from 9:00 to 10:00, and the Street Fair and Earth Day celebration is from 11:00 to 4:30 on May 1st. So mark your calendars as exciting times to come back, to come all together outside. On a similar note, also want everybody to know that the Main Street Highland Park Farmers Market is gonna be back up and running April 1st. That's one of the earliest starts ever. So please join us on Friday afternoons for this Highland Park Tradition Farmers Market, starting again on April 1st. So tonight, we are gonna also be approving the Borough's Neighborhood Preservation Plan, which is a roadmap that we're gonna be used for making some of the most amazing and much-needed improvements to Woodbridge Avenue. This is the culmination of many months of hard work of meetings, discussions, stakeholder surveys, and lots of idea generation. And so I wanted to thank all of the members of the NPP Stakeholder Committee for their thoughtful efforts and for their time. I wanted to thank everyone in town, over 600 people participated in a survey with both fantastic ideas and ideas about what to do in and out of the district. It's been a really fabulous process. I also wanted to thank the mayor very much for fighting for this for years. I know this has been on her radar screen for many, many years, and she finally got it. So this is a great thing for Highland Park. And then lastly, of course, Terry Hovir and Emma Von Thun for their fantastic efforts and work in shepherding this process. So there's a long way to go, it's a five-year process, but we really do believe that with this assistance and with continued hard work, we're gonna be able to sort of make a real change up on Woodbridge Avenue and some really exciting opportunities up on Woodbridge. So thank you, everybody, for your participation and your help and hard work on this. And then finally, I wanted to wish everyone who celebrates a very happy and very joyous Purim, which is this week. It also coincides with St. Patrick's Day this year, which doesn't happen very often. So I want to give an extra special shout-out to all my fellow members of the Irish-Jewish community because it's a very important community in Highland Park. There's about four of us, but we really do appreciate it, and thank you very much. Have a very, very happy Purim, a happy St. Patrick's Day, and may they both be safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Matt Hirsch, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I just wanted to segue off of the St. Patrick's Day well wishes. Our leprechauns are out there. You might have seen them, but they are out in the community, and we have to find them. There are some, the Highland Park Recreation Department is hosting a leprechaun hunt, and there's still time for hunting, the leprechaun hunt. And that sounds, you know what? I'm not hunting leprechauns, we're seeking them and caring for them. It ends this Thursday, March 17th, and there's clues on the Highland Park Recreation Facebook page. If you find one, take a selfie, take a picture, tag the Borough or tag the Highland Park Recreation Department, or email Kimberly McGraw at kmcgraw@gmail.com to send us your selfies. We take care, I have a very sympathetic spot for leprechauns. I just, I did just want to point folks to the Highland Park Recreation's website, www.hiroparkrec.com. Register now for a whole host of programming that is coming up now that spring is just inching closer and closer every day. We have theater programs, we have camps, leaders in training for grades six through eight, musical theater camps for grades two through eight, sports camps for grades two through eight, and summer camp that starts July 5th for grades K through five. Youth sports, baseball, flag football, basketball clinics, soccer clinics, and track and field, as well as tennis for adults and youth. And there are adult sports that are available too. Soccer, basketball, baseball, soccer, sorry, basketball, volleyball, and youth classes and activities. Gorilla Art Club, which is a really exciting program, a joint collaboration between our Highland Park Arts Commission, to which I'm also liaison, and the Recreation Department. Check it out at hiroparkrec.com. And just to, I did just want to, two other items. I was very proud to march with the community and some really impressive high school students who organized a march for the people of Ukraine last Friday. And, you know, it's just another reminder that, you know, when we have a global crisis and one that directly affects our neighbors and our community, what can we do at home? And how can we organize and how can we raise awareness? Highland Park High School students who organized Friday's March for Ukraine showed us by telling profoundly powerful and equally heartbreaking stories about their families and friends back home. As young people who face an increasingly volatile world, the courage that they showed to tell their stories and shed their tears was inspiring, and that they showed that they and we will not stand idly by. Again, I was proud to stand side by side at this event with these young activists, Interfaith Rise, the Reformed Church of Highland Park, and others to help our Ukrainian neighbors raise awareness and funds for the Ukrainian people. The fact that they led this event gives me so much hope in the face of oppression at home and abroad. We've stood side by side for a number of causes in Highland Park, and we will continue to stand up for our neighbors. Please visit the Interfaith Rise Facebook page for a link for more information and how you can help. And then I did just want to point to one item on the agenda tonight. I'm very excited because this has been about a year in the works. We are moving forward on a bond ordinance and a shared services agreement for improvements to the municipal recreation complex, the track and field at the high school. This has been long overdue. The field and the track are in need of much improvement. And this exciting project, which is slated to take place at some point over the summer, we have to work out the timeline still, is welcome news for an exceedingly important municipal asset and one that we hold dear because it not only provides an important service for recreation programs for our schools, but it also attracts folks to Highland Park for meets, for soccer games, and so forth. So it's a real public amenity and deserves the attention. And we're grateful to our state legislators for advocating for Highland Park in order to get funding from last year's state budget in order to help offset some of the costs here. So that's my report, Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. I would add about the Rec Center. Not only will it benefit the high school students and bring people into our community, but many adults in town make use of the track there as well. And particularly during COVID, when there weren't very many opportunities for indoor athletics, the field and track became even more important to us all as a community. So thanks for sticking with this, Matt. Okay, Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Just very briefly, on the 24th of this month, at 6:30, March 24th, 6:30, we're gonna be having our Police Community Forum. It will be posted on the Borough website, but make a note that that's the night of the forum. So please, we are hoping that you will attend and bring us any issues and concerns that you may have. So it's March 24th at 6:30 p.m. Also, we are in the, we're seeking full-time and part-time paid firefighter. We have that position open. So if you know of anyone who is in the fire service and is looking for a paid position, part-time and/or full-time, please have them visit our Borough page and fill an application there or talk to someone. And or even, I think Terry and Norm will be the two contacts on this. But to visit the Borough of Highland Park webpage, and you will find out more information. And we're also in need of crossing guards. So we need crossing guards and firefighters, our emergency services, and need a lot of stuff. Pretty much firefighter community service forum, that's it. And I just want to follow up on what Matt Hale said. My son was always Jewish, especially during Purim. That was his favorite holiday. He used to be running from Merrill's House to whoever's house because that's a big one for him. So that brought back a lot of memories. That's why I was smiling, because he was very much Jewish, especially at all the Jewish holidays, when there were gifts and food exchanges. That's my report, everyone. The weather is getting nicer. Just a reminder to the kids, to please wear your helmet, be safe out there on the roads. And to everyone, good night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Um, yes, I do, Mayor. As announced at the February 15th Borough Council meeting, the Middlesex County Board of Taxation is requiring that Highland Park conduct a town-wide reevaluation of all properties this year. This evaluation will likely begin early this summer and involve visits by property assessors hired by the Borough to all private and commercial properties. The assessments will require inspectors indoors and outdoors. The last reevaluation in the Borough took place in October 1990, over 30 years ago. So I wasn't around over 30 years ago, and I know some of our residents were. And your experience and the things you like, the things you didn't like, things that you think we can improve this time, definitely, please email myself or our Borough Administrator. Your comments, they're definitely welcomed. And be on the lookout for more information coming soon. Also, tonight, on the work session is the 2022 budget. So while I love hearing your public comment, just please try to keep it too because I want everyone, like, this year's budget is very important coming out of COVID. We have, we have a lot of stuff to discuss, and I want, even if you have input, please, during public comment too. But I really want us to, I want everyone to be refreshed by the time we get to that work session and have their notes sent so we can have a healthy dialogue on this year's budget. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Just briefly, but before my report, I hope everyone continues their support and their prayers and the contributions from our brethren in democracy in Ukraine. It shows that our fragile system of government, self-governance, can disappear at any second, and we need to be attentive to it and cultivate it. And congratulations to everyone and enjoy St. Patrick's Day as well as Purim. With regard to the library, you'll see tonight on the list of ordinance is we have the bond amendments for our contribution to the library's reconstruction project under the State Library Construction Bond Act. Also, on the lease, something that I have a personal and professional interest is the lease for the Bergen Auto Building to lower Raritan Watershed Partnership and their boat building project. It is much more than just a boat building. It's a public and accessible project. They're going to be presenting at the Street Fair as part of the Sustainable Highland Park Earth Day presentations. Very excited about it. They have projects for both education for children and for demonstration, as well as an artist component. Today, I attended the League of Municipalities Mayor's briefing on electric vehicle updates. It was a very informative session with a lot of links and a lot of new programs coming out from the state, from the Board of Public Utilities and the Department of Environmental Protection with regard to grants. And finally, I did provide a summary of our current trash and recycling plans for the near future and two years down the road. Shared that with South Side Cleanup last week in a really productive meeting with the mayor, and that will be rolling out soon. We have a meeting with Public Works, a regular meeting, and we'll be discussing it at that meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
One item, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to draw everybody's attention. We sent out a community email earlier today regarding some relief that's available to individuals in New Jersey with regard to paying utility bills. There is a new program the state just launched called the Low Income Water, Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. It's quite a mouthful, but it will essentially help qualified households help pay back any billings to the utility by actually paying the utility on their behalf. So that's an important program. It's new, the information's on our website where you can apply or you can call 732-819-3788. That's our tax office, and they're prepared just as folks with connecting on that program. And we also wanted to make sure residents were available that, according, and I have to read this because there's dates involved, basically, any of our residential customers from the water and sewer department are eligible for installment plans should they have basically accrued balances during the period between March 9, 2020 and March 15, 2022. Essentially, we can offer an installment plan to help you pay that back over time. However, as a requirement of the program, you have to stay current on all charges. So it's possible maybe that a combination of these programs may be of assistance. So there'll be, there's more information on the website, hpboro.com, or you can always call 732-819-3788, and we'll be happy to assist you.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
I know, report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I do have a few things. So first, COVID. If you've been to any of our Borough buildings recently, you've noticed that our policies have shifted in response to the markedly diminished threat of COVID-19 in our area. We're pleased to welcome people back into our buildings. Wear masks are now optional, and we're preparing for a gradual return to the in-person meetings with capacity limits, so stay tuned. I also want to thank everyone for their patience as we've carefully evaluated the changing circumstances surrounding COVID-19 in order to make the most prudent adaptations. I'm also particularly grateful for the infectious disease specialists on the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, who have given me sound counsel as we consider the different milestones in the pandemic. As Councilwoman Foster mentioned, the Borough is inviting residents to a Highland Park Community Program with Highland Park Police Department leaders. It will be the first quarterly meeting for 2022, picking up on the quarterly meetings we've had over the last year. The meeting will be held on Zoom on Thursday, March 24th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the Zoom address is available via different news stories that the Borough is issuing, plus it's posted on the front page of the Borough's website. At this meeting, Police Chief Rick Abrams will discuss the new state of New Jersey Attorney General's Use of Force Policy and the 2021 year-end numbers and 2022 Quarter One Department Statistics. He'll then be able to respond to questions from the public, starting with questions submitted in advance, and that is by Wednesday, the 23rd, at noon. If you want to submit a question in advance, please send the email to the Borough's Public Information Officer, Harry Glazer, and he can be reached at hglazer@hpboro.com. I want to brief you on my Mayor's Equity Advisory Council. Even before the shocking death of George Floyd and the national protests and inspired, Councilwoman Foster joined me and community leaders in regular and in-depth discussions on the role of the police in our town, the uses of force in police work, and other questions related to bias equity and justice. My Mayor's Equity Advisory Council has become one of the primary forums for these discussions, and they are now looking into whether or not to establish a civilian review board. Our Equity Advisory Council seeks new volunteers who are concerned about these issues to participate in the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council, which meets monthly on Zoom and considers a range of issues related to equity in Highland Park. You can volunteer for this group by contacting Harry Glazer, the Borough's Public Information Officer. Again, his email address is hglazer@hpboro.com. As Councilman Hale mentioned in tonight's meeting, we will be formally approving the rather remarkable plan for the revitalization of Woodbridge Avenue's district. And it comes under the rubric of New Jersey's Department of Community Affairs Neighborhood Preservation Program, NPP. This comprehensive plan reflects sustained efforts over a few months to elicit public feedback on residents and prisons owners' views on the most desirous activities to bring new energy into that district. These efforts have been remarkably successful, attracting nearly 600 respondents to an online survey and dozens of participants in neighborhood meetings. The Woodbridge Avenue NPP project is built on the hard work and creative vision of two leaders in the Borough. Assistant to the Borough Administrator, Emma Von Thun, who serves as the NPP Program Coordinator, and Councilman Matthew Hale, a tireless coordinator, sorry, tireless cheerleader and creative problem solver for our town. He oversees the economic development and planning for the Borough Council. Thank you, Emma and Matt, for all the thought, time, brainstorming, and effort which you have invested in this plan. Since shortly after becoming mayor, I've been keenly interested in seeing the DCA's NPP program play a role in our town. I held conversations with our elected leaders in the New Jersey Legislature and administrators to see what we can do to earn that NPP status, which I felt for a long time Highland Park should qualify for. For a while, the program losing my voice a little bit here. For a while, the program applied only to municipalities as a whole. And our town was deemed ineligible. Recently, the NPP Program updated its definitions to focus on underutilized districts in towns. And this change has made all the difference for Highland Park. I'm delighted to see the NPP Program poised to re-energize the Woodbridge Avenue District. And I'm grateful to all the residents who have informed and to Emma Von Thun and Councilman Hale again, who have led this exemplary effort. Finally, our hearts go out to the citizens of Ukraine. Images of innocent women and babies, old aged Ukrainians fleeing their homes, often rubble, often rubble sprune are heart wrenching. Besides sending financial support, what can we as Americans do? Frankly, we must stay vigilant in protecting our own democracy. Be vocal. Be active in local government. And please vote. Okay, that's it. We're now up to our public participation first session. Total time allotted is twenty one minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session, which is later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three minute mark to make sure that everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand icon in the application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, it looks like I have someone named Anne up first. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Anne Sherber. I live at three twenty one Mansfield Street. I would like to speak tonight in support of the cannabis statute and the amendments that are on the agenda. I think that this will be a wonderful addition to our community. And I think, and I'm surprised by how how a minority of our neighbors have turned this into a sort of this, you know, bet noire of, you know, as soon as a cannabis shop opens, the entire town will collapse in on itself. So I I encourage you to, you know, to pass this legislative, pass this ruling and 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 make these licenses available for prospective retailers. As an aside, I also want to say I know I'm I'm very encouraged to hear that there is a revale in the works. I know that this is going to be a huge undertaking and very stressful. And I imagine that you will end up with a lot of angry citizens, but I think it will go a long way toward making the tax base in our town more equitable than it is now. So I applaud that and I'm encouraged to hear that that's in the works. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, Borough Administrator, are there more people?
Oh, yes. And I forgot to mention, we have forty two attendees and eight or nine hands raised at this point. Next up is Dan Stern Cardinal.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty one Harper Street. I'll comment on the cannabis stuff when we get to that resolution specifically, just I'm for it, but I'll comment specifically when we get there. Right now, I just want to comment briefly on the possibility of returning to in-person meetings with a capacity limit. I think it's really important that if we are in a situation where it's safe enough to be in person, but it's not safe enough to allow that room to be full, then we have an obligation to stay on Zoom so that everybody that wants to attend can attend. My worry is that if you're in the room in person, but there's a fifty percent or twenty five percent or whatever capacity limit, you're going to have people that would like to attend the meeting and comment in person, but would be unable to do so because of that limit. So I think very strongly that if we're in a situation where it's not safe enough to have the meetings in person with no capacity limits, then we really ought to keep them Zoom until we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next up is Thea Dahlberg. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thea Dahlberg, three seventeen Montgomery Street. I don't need three minutes. I just want to voice my support for the cannabis ordinance and hope it goes forward very soon. That's all.
Thank you.
I've got a phone number up next. The last four digits end in six, seven, zero, eight. Again, six, seven, zero, eight. Please state your name and address for the record, please. You might have to unmute yourself. You're going to have to press star six if you're calling in. Again, phone number ending in six, seven, zero, eight. To unmute yourself, you can press star six on your keypad. There you go.
Okay, hi, this is John Bucow. I live at four one Byron Place down in Somerset.
Excuse me.
Sorry, could you state your name again, please?
Yeah, John Bucow, B U C O, at four one Byron Place in Somerset.
I'm sorry, you're breaking, you're breaking up. It's very difficult to hear you.
How about now?
Let's keep trying. So say your name again.
Okay, John Bucow. I live at four one Byron Place in Somerset.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say, I called in December and I was mentioning that I might be moving back on my retirement to Highland Park. But with the marijuana laws that you're trying to pass, there's absolutely no way that I'm going to be coming into town. And falsely claiming for the good of the town, even though there are thousands of kids living in Highland Park, it's just crazy that you think this is going to help. What I want to say also is you're trying to make money by bringing pot shops into town and breaking federal law. You should look at where unnecessary expenses are in Highland Park. Taxpayers are subsidizing the healthcare for the mayor and Ms. Foster. When I mentioned this in December, the mayor responded that there was two physicians for grandfathered and that not all of it is being paid by taxpayers, just part of it. First is because those two physicians for grandfathered, you're still taking advantage of taxpayers footing the bill in your healthcare. And it really seems unnecessary. Each of you are employed in good jobs outside of the council. The mayor even owns a nice business in Highland Park, and there are many options available for anyone that needs healthcare, such as Medicaid, Medicare, and the Affordable Care App. Having Highland Park taxpayers subsidize your healthcare really seems like a stretch. And if you're really concerned about money for Highland Park, this seems like a great way to save the town some money. So my question is this, can you please tell me how much actual money have Highland Park taxpayers spent for the healthcare costs for each of you? And can you do it for the last three years? And you can consider this an oh for a request. Also, I'd like to add real quickly, I'm friends with a lot of business owners in Highland Park that I've been talking to in the last couple of weeks, and a lot of them are very prominent, and none of them have been contacted by anyone about what's going on. They're all shocked. Can the people that you're trying to help be contacted and told what's going on? And that's all I have to say. And have a nice day, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Tony, is there anyone else?
Yes, there is, Mayor. Just gonna double check our time. Okay, we're fine. Looks like someone named Edward is up next. If you could just state your full name and address, please.
Is it Edward Epstein?
Yes, this is Edward and Betty Epstein. We live at two oh eight Cedar Avenue in Highland Park. We both would like to say something. I'm Betty, and I just want to tell you that I'm against cannabis in Highland Park. I think we really should let the other towns do it first, see how it works out, see what problems and issues there are. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of problems and issues, and I think the council is just running headlong into something that's going to be a big mistake for the town.
Okay, and Edward, did you want to speak as well?
Yes, of course. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edward Epstein. I'm Betty's husband, and I live at two oh eight Cedar Avenue, Island Park, New Jersey. I have some comments. First of all, I'd like to tell you a little bit about my background. My background is I'm not from this area. I'm from Chicago, Illinois area. And I was an adult probation officer. So I had caseloads of young people who were basically involved with marijuana issues. And the point is, at that stage, when I was involved, there was quite a bit of penalties because they would get a record from it. There was sometimes they would have probation from six months to five years. And the point is, that's what I want to mention, my background. Next thing I want to talk about are the pot shops. The whole point is, you have to realize something. If you're going to start a protocol like this, you really don't start with six. You have to take a very close look at you live in a two mile radius town. And you have a very superb reputation. And there's fifteen thousand people here, and you have to take that in consideration. Next, the thing is, the whole idea is, I'm very much against the ordinance. So I want to talk about something else. What I want to talk about is I understand I'm supposed to be six, and my understanding is one of the six is supposed to be medical. So I'm very concerned if medical marijuana locations are going to carry also recreational types of products. And the one that I've heard that they're going to do is two H T H three, I'm sorry, THC. And this is very paramount to these individual. Next, I think we need, we shouldn't have so many dispatch offices. Remember, we're just six. This is a very small place. And as I mentioned to you before, it's about two miles, fifteen thousand population. And you have to consider these things, pardon?
It's a second.
Okay, I think the clergy has to be informed because the clergy consists of synagogues and churches. And they also have tremendous amount of individual concern. Next, the whole idea is there's many issues involved in this. You also have to have cost factors because of the fact being that you have issues that require funds, like for the police department. Need issues. Okay, I'll finish in two minutes.
You don't have two minutes.
No.
And Highland Park is a pot city, and you better consider very carefully because it's going to bring a lot of problems to you unexpectedly.
Thank you, Edward. Okay, Borough Administrator, anybody else?
Yes, I do see some additional hands. Looks like it's coming up MSB space F R C T. So whomever that is, if they could please tell us their full name and address.
Hi, Mary Botian, seven oh nine Madison. I'm one of the many residents asking you to please hold off on three twenty two seventy six. I'm also one of the many residents against the entire pot ordinance. I'm also one of the many folks incredibly disappointed the borough is ignoring federal laws, trying to impose all of this on us. It's tough to narrow down many problems in three minutes, but I will try. One, if any of these businesses regrettably come into our small town, it's critical the borough know now how to remove these in the future when things go sour. And it really is when, not if. You need to have viable options for removing these businesses at some point because it will come down to this if the seven of you insist on making this mistake. Two, council has been providing false information regarding Class Six Pot Delivery Services. To be clear, Class Six are the actual offices or other physical locations from which pot drivers go to pick up the pot or are dispatched through that location. The issue is that council has been saying the borough could not keep out any of these pot dispatch businesses, which is an entirely separate issue than having to allow in drivers employed by a Class Six business anywhere in New Jersey. Council's claim that Class Six is required to be office here is completely untrue. And now these businesses make up an unlimited number of the licenses you have proposed. No doubt, if council received false information for months and then was forced to sign an agreement, you would be very unhappy to be manipulated that way. In this instance, however, it is the council conveying inaccurate information in order to craft a pot ordinance. And you are not holding yourselves accountable for this. You cannot give false information to the public for months and then try to proceed as if this did not happen. One resident said, if this plan goes through, it would be a seismic shift for Highland Park. I think that's a great way to describe this, also a seismic mistake. So if you continue to orchestrate this shift, it will be your accountability, not ours. When Highland Park invites families to Arts in the Park or Fourth of July, will the ads say, you know, come bring your kids and also stop at one of our six pot shops? Gail, when you invite residents on your Heart Healthy Walks in Donaldson Park, are you going to, are you going to say, let's go hit one of our six pot shops afterwards? The question I have now for each of you, what would convince each of you to change your minds at this point? If you can please each answer individually. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
Looks like Jill Levy is next. Please state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Jill Levy, two twenty eight Felton Avenue. I agree with Mary and everybody else who urges you not to pass Resolution number three twenty two dash seventy six. And I'm against the entire pot ordinance, the way it's written. I also share the disappointment that our officials are ignoring federal law to impose this on us. You know, I raised my two kids here. I think that our property values are going to go down and people are not going to want to raise their kids here if you've got six pot shops. So we're really at danger, losing our property values, damage the quality of life, possible driving accidents that we're causing by contributing to having all of these places available. You know, I happen to know people who told me about this, but I haven't seen any publicity about this issue beyond just a few friends emailing me. I think this is the kind of thing that the town should know about and vote on. You know, I don't think it should be left up to just a few people. This is a very, very serious issue. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Tony, anybody else?
Yes, I do see a number of hands, and I just wanted to, for your record, I had marked our twenty one minute mark at seven fifty four. So we've got four minutes left on that.
Okay, so Borough Clerk, if you could notify us when we're at that point, and then anyone who does not get a chance to speak will have an opportunity to speak later in the meeting.
So then we have, we have time for one more speaker.
Okay.
Looks like Karen Ebbell Avery is next. If you could say your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Karen Ebbell Avery. I live at 402 Graham Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. I'm a pediatrician in central New Jersey, as well as here in Highland Park. I am speaking this evening to encourage you to not pass Resolution Number 32276. I am against the entire pot ordinance in Highland Park, and that, as mentioned by other speakers, what you are doing is ignoring federal laws in imposing all of this on us. I also wanted to express that I will be forwarding to your attention a communication exchange that I have had with another council attorney regarding the matter of advertisement of pot with regard to youth, increased youth use and abuse of pot, as published in recent American Cannabis Pediatric News. There's some great deal of concern with the council attorney's response, and I will be forwarding a reply to you within the next couple of days because I am concerned that we will have a significant public health crisis on our hands in due time. I appreciate the time that you have offered me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so I'm assuming we're at the end of that, the first session. Borough Clerk, is that correct?
We can do one more.
Okay, Terry?
Next up is Devon McRimmon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, so my name's Devon McRimmon. I'm from East Brunswick. I live at 39 Toll Oak Strive in East Brunswick. Myself, along with my business partner Devon of Hazel &amp; Leaf, we are interested in creating an upscale cannabis boutique in Highland Park in the near future with the approval of this community. We understand the challenges of entering into such a new industry, and we've heard the concerns voiced by members of the community, and we intend to take that feedback seriously as we create a business plan that will most accurately conform to the needs and desires of this community. Cannabis is controversial. We are aware of it. We are not ignorant to the fact that it may not be accepted by everyone who lives within Highland Park. We have heard the challenges that the local residents believe will change the fabric of their community. In reality, this is the exact opposite of our intention. I'd like to point out that Devon, my business partner, she's a mother of three. She's a nurse in the state of New Jersey. We both have grown up in Middlesex County, myself in Edison, Devon in Island. If this were being allowed in East Brunswick, we would show up to our own community and advocate for ourselves as business owners. But that's not the case. I'm sure that I'm not alone in using many of our neighboring communities for its resources as a central New Jersey resident. We have a family. We drive into Highland Park regularly. We've gone to Dairy Deluxe for afternoon ice cream, and we are really excited to be a part of the Highland Park community. Hazel &amp; Leaf will be an establishment for the sale of recreational cannabis for those who intend to use cannabis responsibly. Just as any liquor store or bar in Highland Park targets its adults whom they entrust to purchase goods and use them appropriately and safely in Highland Park, so will Hazel &amp; Leaf. We pride ourselves in doing business legally and tactically. We intend to only add value to the business scene of this town. The aesthetic of our store will be unlike any smoke shop some of you may be envisioning. If you've never been to a legal recreational cannabis shop in any of our neighboring states, I'd recommend you explore. Even if you are not a cannabis user, you will surely be able to appreciate the worth of this industry. We plan to conform to all regulations appointed by the council and the state. We are not in any way interested in being suggestive to the younger members of the community. And again, we plan to positively add to this community in more ways than one. We plan to change the narrative on the sale of cannabis and the social stigma of this industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. We're up, I'm sorry, Borough Administrator.
May I mention one thing? I just, because we do have a number of hands raised. I just wanted to make it clear, when we get to the ordinance, there will be another public hearing where people will have the opportunity to speak on this matter in addition to the second public comment at the very end, towards the end of the meeting. So I just wanted to make that point clear to anybody who had their hand raised.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the ordinances requiring a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising and the amending, and amending Chapter 230 Automotive Service and Repair Garages for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 230 Lane Development concerning Automotive Service and repair garages was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
They're moved.
Motion.
So we have a first and a second. Any public hearing?
I do see a bunch of hands raised, but they are the same hands that were raised during the prior public comment session. So I just would clarify for anybody with their hand up. This is a public hearing specific to the Automotive Service and Repair Garage ordinance. If you could please lower your hand if you're not interested in commenting on that, and then re-raise your hand when we get to the matter that you would like to speak on. Appears I have one hand raised now. It looks like Hyam Baru. If you want to state your name and address, please. Was that? Hyam Baru? Were you interested in speaking on this matter?
I believe Hyam's hand was raised before.
Okay, so, all righty.
So there are no hands?
I see one other hand. It looks like James Polos. Please state your name and address for the record. Again, this is regarding Automotive Service Repair Garages?
No, I wanted to discuss the last issue. My hand should be lowered.
It's still up, but I'll take it down for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mary. Ooh, I see Pat B. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Pat Bell. I'm at 219 South 7th Ave. I just wanted to ask when we plan on getting to the next public comment section for the next, for the previous motion. I'm on a break from work and limited time here.
Okay, so we have to follow the outline of the agenda, and the next topic is the ordinance to amend the establishment and operation and licensing of cannabis businesses. So it would be the next one coming up.
Okay, wonderful.
Soon as we get through this, we can get back to everyone's question.
All right, with that, Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, then may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes?
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
I would just like to thank all of the local businesses who brought this to our attention as this is an opportunity to help out some of our local shops. So I wanted to thank them for that and wholeheartedly vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance to amend Chapter 136 of the Borough Code regulating the establishment, operation, and licensing of cannabis businesses in the borough of Highland Park for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending the code of the borough of Highland Park regarding Class V retail cannabis businesses, Class VI cannabis delivery services, and medical cannabis dispensaries in the CBD and C zoning districts, establishing licensing, taxation, and zoning requirements in connection therewith, and prohibiting all other classes of cannabis business within the geographical boundaries of the borough, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
They're moved.
Okay. We're now up to the public hearing portion of this ordinance, and so Borough Administrator, I'm going to turn it over to you to call on folks.
Sure, we have, just for the record, 53 attendees. Nice to see eight hands raised at this point. First up is Rebecca Hirsch.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Rebecca Hirsch, 331 Felton Avenue. And I just want to be clear that I'm only speaking for myself as a longtime Highland Park resident. I'm not speaking for anyone else or any other organizations. I just wanted to voice my personal support for the cannabis legislation. I think it will be a positive for our town and for our downtown, and I think that I support Governor Murphy's initiative on this front. I think that cannabis is less dangerous than alcohol, and I don't, I don't separate the two in my mind. So I just want to thank you guys for your hard work on this topic and give you my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next?
Alan Kluger, you're up next. State your name and address, please.
Hi, Alan Kluger, 115 North 10th Avenue. I'm not, I am not against the cannabis ordinance in general, but I do have significant issues with the number of licenses, specifically six, being discussed to be allowed, especially given the size of our town, the size of our downtown, and the significant amount of negative feedback on this issue you've heard from many residents across a broad and diverse spectrum of our town. Also, putting aside the municipalities, especially in Middlesex County that are, that are not allowing cannabis operations, including East Brunswick, which I think the previous infomercial that we just heard from, from the person who has a cannabis business, many towns are significantly limiting how many retail operations you could have in a town and where they can be. Take Edison, for example, our next-door neighbor, which is multiple times our size in terms of area and residents. And I believe, if I read correctly, they're only allowing three and only in a specific area. I'm sure they had a reason for that, and you know, for that limitation. Other towns also are limiting not just the number of locations and the number of retail operations, but also certain issues related to consumption, location near schools and religious uses, you know, and things like that. It doesn't seem that we are following that path, and we seem to be just wanting to open up to as many licenses as, you know, as we can. I think it's something to consider, that if there is a possibility, I know the market will determine how many licenses potentially we'll have, but do you really envision having such a store on every single block of our downtown? Is that something, you know, that we're looking for? Why not start with one or two? And then see if any of the negative issues that are being brought up by people, I'm not saying I agree with all of them, and you know, and some of them are parade of horrible situation, but who knows? We don't know what it's gonna bring. Why not start with one or two, see if it's working properly, and then open it up to additional licenses? Another thing to consider, I know we always care about the reputation of our town. If we do allow up to six, I will bet we will have a distinction in New Jersey of being, having the highest number of retail cannabis operations per capita or per square mile, you know, of all towns. Is that, if that's something that we're looking forward to, and that's something we want as our reputation, great, move forward. But I'm not sure that that's really what the town as a whole is looking for. I've heard you talk about, you know, the potential revenues that this can, tax revenues this can bring in. I don't think we've heard exactly what those revenues may be and how much it's really gonna benefit it, and how do you balance that against the potential negative costs, whether it's personal or monetary, that we can incur by having so many, so many of these retail operations? I've heard someone say the six matches up to the number of liquor stores that we have. To me, that's apples and oranges. I'm not sure that's, that's really a fair, a fair comparison. But I think it's something you should consider, you know, reducing the number of licenses going forward and increase it as time goes on if they are successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Borough Clerk, when you're announcing the time, you may need to say it a few times so that people can hear. Thank you. Borough Administrator, is there someone else?
Yes, I do see additional hands. Just a little guidance from you. I have some folks who have spoken on this topic previously in the list. Do you want me to just take them in order?
I, I-
But I just didn't know how you wanted me to go.
I'm thinking it's best to let people who haven't had a chance to speak, speak first, and then to let them go afterwards. Let the others go again as long as time permits. I see two hands. Matt Hirsch, I saw your hand up first.
Sorry, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that this is a separate public hearing, so I feel that people should be called on in the order of their hands.
Mayor, I was going to point out the same thing. When an ordinance is up for second adoption, there is no, generally, there can be a time limit per speaker, but all speakers should be heard. People were addressing it during the general comment on items on the agenda, so I think Councilman Hirsch is right. We just go through the list, and we get there when we get there.
All right, so there is Borough Attorney. Just want your confirmation that there are no time limits, and we have to go in order of the hands as they're raised.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as long as everyone who wants to testify during the public hearing gets an opportunity to do so, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to introduce a complication, Mayor.
Okay.
Next up is Devon McRimmon. State your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. It's Devon McRimmon again. I live at 39 Toll Oak Strive in East Brunswick. So I do want to pivot from, you know, my interest as a prospective business owner and just speak about some of the things that I've heard so far in relation to this ordinance. A lot of it doesn't seem to be grounded in fact, and it seems to be grounded in an emotional reaction to something that a lot of people aren't familiar with. I would suggest any residents to look at case studies from other towns and other states and how cannabis has affected the markets, has affected the community. There is no proof that the town will go down in flames if you allow cannabis to operate, cannabis businesses to operate within your town. I would also like to point out that cannabis will be in your town regardless of whether you have businesses or not. There is no way to stop that. I do, I just, I want to acknowledge that change is extremely scary. I understand why this is such a big issue for the residents of this town. And I know, coming from someone who is not a resident, I can't really advocate as much as I would like to if this was my own town. But cannabis is recognized as a, as a form of medication, and I think that that is totally being missed within this dialogue. And I think it's important to allow people the freedom to make their own choices. And if you do not support this ordinance, don't buy cannabis. I will say, as a prospective business owner, I personally don't understand why there are six licenses being allowed in such a small area. While that might be beneficial for myself, that, that is one piece of the ordinance that does not really make sense, especially when you compare it to Edison, who is only allowing two cannabis dispensaries or retail shops in their town. I know I'm biased in this, but I wish you guys all the luck. I really appreciate you taking a step forward and allowing this in your town. And yeah, I just want- And yeah, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Next is Jessica Sweet. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Sweet. I live at one sixteen Benner Street here in Highland Park. And I wanted to just say, first of all, I, I'm fully in support of this ordinance. I think it is an extremely progressive, very well crafted ordinance. I do have a couple of comments, I suppose. Number one about in one thirty-six seven, where you're talking about requesting licenses, there's a, there's a reference to a one hundred point scoring matrix for license applications. But it appears that most of the standards for review of the license applications are being removed with this version of the ordinance. And I would just suggest that those be maintained, but perhaps I guess be codified as guidance for the clerk so that there is, there are clear standards. As a resident, I also like, there was a, there was a provision in the original codification of the ordinance that talked about a preference for local residents, for Highland Park residents who are looking to begin, you know, to get into this industry, which if you've looked at any of the CRC regs, then what the state is trying to do with it is really trying to promote social equity, minority owned businesses, and women owned businesses, including micro businesses to allow people of different diverse backgrounds and women in particular also to get into this new industry. And I would, I, I, I think frankly that the six licenses is very smart because one of the issues we have in Highland Park is the retail space that's available. We don't have large pad retail sites where we could have lots of parking. We have a lot of smaller buildings that would be repurposed, perhaps by micro business licenses who are limited to less than twenty-five hundred square feet for their facility. So I, I think that there's something very intelligent about including, providing opportunity for many, you know, other, other applicants to get into this business and perhaps to run a smaller shop than many of the large, you know, ten thousand square foot cannabis dispensaries you may see in other states. So I think what New Jersey's doing and what Highland Park is doing here is, is very progressive and probably some of the best cannabis legislation really in the country. So I, I fully support this and I applaud the council and I, I think it's a great step forward for our town. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica.
Next up, Pat B.
Hi, my name is Pat Bell at two-one-nine South Seventh Ave. I just wanted to say I'm very much in favor of the cannabis ordinance. I think it's a no brainer from a budgetary point of view, the tax revenue it can bring in. And I'm also in favor of keeping marijuana out of children's, children's hands. It may have been a couple of decades, but I do remember being in high school. And if you ask any of them, which is easier to get, beer or cannabis? They'll say cannabis every time. Because generally it turns out drug dealers do not ask for ID and licensed stores generally do. I say this as someone who has no skin in the game, as I still get drug tested for work. I think from, from the point of view of the number of licenses, if there's enough market demand to keep those stores in business, I say have at it. And I think starting with matching the number of liquor stores in the town is as good a starting point as any. Just want to thank you fine folks of the council for, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Borough Administrator? Looks like Randall Solomon is up next. Please state your name and address.
Hello.
Hello.
Randy Solomon, three thirty-one Felton Avenue. And I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance. I think it's a, in general, it's a high time that sort of a widely practiced thing that only, only was made illegal because of a very sort of wrongheaded ideas is sort of finally legalized. I think it's going to be good for business. People will come from out of town. A lot of the, the scary possible outcomes that people have mentioned just haven't materialized. Whole other states have sort of legalized it with very few restrictions. And we haven't seen Colorado and Massachusetts fall off the end of the earth and their children become, you know, potheads or, or what have you. And we haven't seen Europe fall off the end of the earth. I think it's just high time we sort of just get over the fear of this and take advantage of the opportunity to add some viable businesses that will bring people downtown. And I'll also note that people have been trying to get more liquor licenses in Highland Park for quite a long time because they recognize the economic benefits of people who might want to come and dine and have a drink. That's also tightly controlled in New Jersey in a way that people recognize is sort of based on outmoded, you know, social mores that no longer exist. But it's, it's sort of a, I don't want to say a corrupt enterprise, but it's sort of protecting existing businesses. But it would be a good thing to loosen up those liquor licenses. There's no reason why we should restrict marijuana licenses either. I, I don't know why there's a limit of, of six even. It's just something that should not be, you know, regulated. I recognize that people are nervous because it's new and there was, you know, a massive ad campaign and a war on drugs for, for, you know, for me, I'm, you know, fifty-two years old for all of my life. And it's hard to sort of move past those, the, that type of thinking. But I feel pretty confident that all that's going to happen when these shops go in is that we'll raise tax revenue, we'll bring more people downtown. Solid citizens downtown who, you know, will, will shop in all of the shops and make our downtown more lively. And it's not gonna, it's not going to change the trajectory of, you know, any child's life because as was said previously, it's easier to get marijuana right now than it is to get alcohol. And all this will do is sort of legalize it, make it, make what's already happening above board and give people an opportunity to have sort of more rational conversations about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator?
Looks like Shelley Sal is up next. State your name and address, please. Shelley, you might need to unmute yourself.
Right. My name is Shelley Sal. I live at three-six-six North Fourth Avenue in Highland Park. I have not been on for quite a while to talk about this. I still am very much concerned that I, I'm not hearing questions answered that are directly being asked. And I'm not sure why some questions are answered and some aren't. Is this not, I do have a quick question. Is this not the time where we can ask a question and there can be responses from the council people?
Borough Attorney, can you address that, please?
This is the public hearing on the ordinance and obviously there are a lot of attendees and a lot of people interested. So I think it's appropriate for the council to get as many of the speakers on and let them voice their opinions. If people want to submit written questions, and we've had people do that through an Oprah request or otherwise, we're happy to respond to those, but it takes up a lot of time in the meeting. I think it should be devoted to the actual public hearing.
So part of the public.
Shelley, I just want you to know that even if we don't respond, everyone on the Zoom here is hearing and listening to what is being said.
No, I, I understand that, but if there are specific questions being asked, I'm not sure why even one person could not answer. That is a disappointment. I wanted to understand, Terry, you had mentioned that there would be another hearing. What happens after tonight?
Terry, do you want to?
I, I was referring to the hearing we are in right now. This is the public hearing for the ordinance amendment. And that's what I was referring to because I saw a lot of hands in the first public comment section.
Okay. I'm not knowing if there is any kind of financial look that is available for the public if there has been mentioned that this is a good thing financially. Is there a spreadsheet available for us to actually look at as an objective view of what are the benefits, what are the cost deficits in relationship to bringing in these businesses?
Shelley, it's difficult to assess a financial number on any specific store until you know what the store is going to be selling, how big it is, and what the prices of all the merchandise would be. I think what people were referring to was the fact that the stores may bring some liveliness to the downtown and hence all of the retailers downtown, downtown and the restaurants would prosper from.
But I apologize that perhaps I have heard it quite differently, which is the touting of taxes being brought in, et cetera, you know, paying tax to and, and getting more tax benefit from that. My greatest disappointment is that I do not hear from the council people any thanks with a kind of opinions that have come in that are very, very clear and I think respectfully proposed.
Okay. I think that Shelley, everybody who's come up to speak has been thanked the same way. But let's move on to the next speaker.
Looks like Ken Finn MD is up next.
Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
All right. I'm Ken Finn. I'm a physician. My address is six zero zero five Delmonico in Colorado Springs. Although I'm not from New Jersey, I was raised in Bergen County, went to Bergen Catholic High School. So I appreciate everybody on council taking this opportunity. The things that I am concerned about, I, I served on our governor's task force for Emmett sixty-four, which legalized marijuana for recreational use. I served three, four years on our Medical Marijuana Scientific Advisory Council. I edited the first medical textbook on cannabis and medicine and founded a nonprofit, the International Academy on the Science and Impacts of Cannabis. I can tell you right now that in New Jersey, the accidental poisonings in young children have gone through the roof over the past several years. And I can, I'm going to read you just one anecdote from my colleague who's an emergency room physician regarding a thirteen year old girl that was brought to the emergency department with suicidal ideation. And turns out her parents got the message that it's okay, it's harmless, it's natural. So they decided to let their thirteen year old child use cannabis and she tested positive for THC only. She probably started using at the age of eleven or twelve. And by the time she was seen in the emergency room, she was actively addicted to cannabis. She was exceeding what her parents would give her, so she was trading sex for weed in middle school. We don't have enough mental health treatment. This girl waited for days in the emergency department and ended up going home with her parents. The things that are concerning in Colorado and you cannot claim ignorance, these things will happen when you expand marijuana programs. You will have an increase in drug overdoses that's happened in Colorado, increases in impaired driving, increased healthcare utilization and costs, increases in youth use and addiction, an increase in proliferation of the black market. I heard a lot of testimony on how much money you're going to make, but nobody has been able to spell P and L and describe the lost column. We know that alcohol, marijuana and alcohol and tobacco make a lot of money for their respective industries, but we know they cost society a lot of money in the millions per year. So I implore you to follow the science and not listen to public opinion when you go down this road. It has not turned out very well for Colorado and other states, particularly when you add the environmental impacts. Just cleaning up California alone, they're predicting about sixty, seventy billion dollars just because of the environmental impacts. And as a reference point, the BP oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico cost sixty billion. So please follow the science, not the money. Thank you for your time and thank you for all that you, work you're doing for your community.
Thank you, Dr. Finn. Okay, next.
I see fourteen hands raised, fifty-four attendees, and Dan Stern Cardinal is up next.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two-twenty-one Harper Street. I just want to start by saying I'm very strongly in favor of the amended cannabis ordinance. Thank you for getting the process for awarding licenses, kind of getting the ball rolling on that. So once we have the opportunity to have applicants, we have a process set for, you know, approving them and getting businesses into Highland Park. In terms of the number of licenses, I think the thing that everyone needs to consider is that legalization is here in New Jersey. We can't control that. So we ought to be maximizing the economic benefit from it. Whatever the potential downsides are, we're going to be dealing with those. I think the potential downsides have been grossly exaggerated in many of these meetings, but whatever they are, we're going to handle them one way or the other. So I agree with Pat who spoke earlier. We ought to be maximizing the economic benefit we can get from this. And if the town can support six businesses, then have at it. We should, we should, you know, move forward with that. Revitalize the downtown and fill up those storefronts. In terms of the reputation for Highland Park, I don't know if everyone knows this, but Highland Park already has a reputation when it comes to cannabis. So, but we also have a reputation as a family town. Those two things coexist because they don't have anything to do with each other. And having retail cannabis isn't going to change either one of those things. I don't think either reputation is going to, is going to go away. Just for any members of the council who are concerned, here's the data that we have when it comes to use by minors, because again, we're talking about adult use retail recreational cannabis. There is a small one to two year increase in use by minors, minors, followed by a return to the pre-legalization baseline. The data we have on that is for legalization, not retail, and we don't have any evidence of local effect. So again, we're going to deal with that one way or the other. There's not much Highland Park can do about that one way or the other. There's also no association with an increase in crime, so you don't have to worry about that. And there is an association with higher property values, specifically when you have retail cannabis businesses in your neighborhood. So for anyone worried about property values, I hope you're in favor of having retail cannabis in Highland Park. So again, thank you for all the work you're doing on this. I'm very strongly in favor of it and really looking forward to seeing the process move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person.
Looks like Jen Voorhees is next.
Hi, everyone. Jen Voorhees, three hundred Donaldson Street. I just wanted to quickly add my voice in support of the ordinance. I have two children in the district and have no concerns at all for them. Seventy percent of Highland Park residents voted in favor of this. The people have clearly spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else?
Yes, there is. Mayor, looks like Sharon Rubin is up next.
Hi, this is Steve Rubin talking. I live at sixty-six South Adelaide Avenue and I have lived in Highland Park my whole life, fifty-five years. And I have to say that despite what some people may think, Highland Park has been on a decline over the years. And I don't think that, that opening six of these shops is going to turn things around and make Highland Park the crown jewel of Middlesex County. I think it's a very bad look for Highland Park. And I think some of the statistics that some of the people in favor of this have been talking about, like higher property values, I don't know where the hell they come up with some of these statistics. That, I think the cannabis industry has done an amazing job marketing themselves and they've had the best lobbyists to get these things approved. But I think we all know in our hearts and in our brains that marijuana is not something that is the best moral thing to be promoting to our children or in town. You know, Highland Park has one supermarket, two pharmacies, two gas stations, three Chinese restaurants, three convenience stores, four pizza shops, four banks. And now we're led to believe that we should have six pot shops. It doesn't even make sense. I don't know what you guys are thinking with all due respect, but this is something that is very bad for Highland Park. And I know a ton of work has also gone into the Highland Park redevelopment planning. And now some people tonight are sort of trying to make it sound like cannabis is going to be the centerpiece of Highland Park's redevelopment because people are going to come to our restaurants after they because people are going to come to our restaurants after they go to the cannabis shops. And the guy from East Brunswick who wants to open a cannabis shop, he's trying to say that he went to Dairy Deluxe. So that's going to promote cross-business like enterprises. I think that opening all these shops like normalizes it for children, even though they're not going in the store, when you see one on every shop with signage advertising it, it's just doesn't say much for Highland Park and it doesn't say much for our society to be going down this path. So I hope you'll think to yourselves that this is not a good idea. I'm very against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator?
Yes, Mayor, I have 12 hands raised, 52 attendees at this point. Lisa, you're up next.
Hi, this is Michael Nass, sitting with Lisa Kaplan. We live at 123 South Adelaide Avenue in Highland Park. We don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said. We just want to add our voices for numbers. We are strongly in favor of the legislation. Thank you for all of your work to contribute to this.
Thank you.
They're moving their hands for themselves. It looks like Tat G, T A T, G is up next. State your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Yes, hi, I'm Tatiana Galfond, 118 North Fifth Avenue. I want to ask you not to pass the Resolution Number 32276. And I'm against the entire pot ordinance the way it is written. From what I understand, it also violates the Federal Controlled Substances Act. And they really do not have space away from schools and other like children, areas for children for these pot businesses. But I want to, also, I want to mention something that I came up just from something else I found on CDC gov website. It's like slash marijuana, slash health effect, slash lung health. They say that smoked marijuana, I'm kind of reading, regardless of how it is smoked, can harm lung tissue and cause scarring and damage to small blood vessels. It also says that smoke from marijuana has many of the same toxins, irritants, and carcinogens as tobacco smoke. And the similar information is in American Lung Association, again, about the damage to the lungs. So this is kind of something new that I came across. And from what the doctor, the MD spoke about, it kind of really fits in the picture. So I'm strongly against the pot shops in our town. I also want to comment to what like two people said who wanted to have these businesses, that like those who are against are afraid of something new. This is, this is just a speculation, and this is totally wrong. I'm very, I'm very sure that if you would offer something new, which would be good for health, would be good for the environment and good for the community, many people would jump to that. So this is not the fear of new, this is a big concern about the health, safety, and look, and also, as it was mentioned, the reputation of our town. I'm a resident for 31 years, it used to be a quiet, green, and nice town. And now with this main focus on the money, which is not very clear how much it will even affect the taxes. This is something that just doesn't fit in the image. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana.
Next hand raised belongs to George Bogar. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is George Bogar. My address is 206 Emperor Street. And I'm just here to, once again, show my support for the legislation. I hope everything goes through swimmingly. I look forward to all this happening. Cannabis has been remarkable as far as my health. I am a medical user. Recreationally, it's super fun also. A lot of people like it. And for the people that don't agree with it, what I really just like to say is, you know, do a little bit of research, talk to people that use it. It's really not that scary. It's safe. You know, there's nothing bad about it. It's, you know, problems come from other places, not from the thing itself. Responsible users do responsible things with it. And it's not harming anyone aside, you know, from, I don't even know who is harming. Anyway, my point is I support it. I thank all the members here for, you know, making this happen, and that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry?
Looks like Cambitzis family is up next. If you could tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Leah Cambitzis, 459 Lincoln Avenue. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'd wanted to tell you that I am against this entire pot ordinance. And I urge you not to pass Resolution 32276. I'm very disappointed that the borough officials are ignoring federal laws in order to impose this on all of us in our small community. And quite frankly, my biggest disappointment is that I feel there's no concern for the children in our community. I hear people saying, oh, it doesn't affect the children. Oh, two people have said tonight and admitted that marijuana is easier to get than alcohol. So with six pot stores in our town, even though the ID, children, underage children are going to be able to very easily ask somebody of age to go in and buy it for them. There is no doubt about that. There are children from the high school that walk down the main street every day for lunch. This temptation is going to be in their faces. This is going to be normalized for our children. And I am not, somebody said that we need to do our research, it's not that bad. If you're an adult and you want to go smoke pot in your home, go ahead. I'm not against that. My concern is that this is going to be all over our small town, and our children are going to be detrimentally affected by this. Being in their faces all the time, getting a contact high, okay? Walking down the street, seeing pot signs and cannabis, whatever. I don't care for it. A lot of people that have spoken tonight do not care for it, and we don't want it in our town. Not to mention that about one in six people who start using marijuana as adolescents, and up to half of people who use it daily eventually do become addicted to marijuana. And also, I don't know where people are getting statistics like that. It will increase the property value. That is highly unlikely. And I can find all those statistics, I can find contrary online, everything that somebody was stating about how it's not bad for you and it'll increase property value, that criminal, it's not going to increase criminal activity. We don't know that. Do we want to experience it and find out on our own? Do we want to find out? Is that what we want in Highland Park? Thank you.
Thank you. How are we doing on time here?
I don't know what the time limits are on this part.
Am I understanding there is no time limit? Borough Attorney, yeah, he's shaking his head. Just wanted to know how long we've been doing this.
Oh, I don't know what time we started. I didn't know that.
Okay.
And the feedback is good. Let's keep going.
The, I'll just report on 52 attendees, 11 hands at this point, Mayor. And Jason Postelnick is up next.
Hello, this is Jason Postelnick, 606 Abbott Street. I just wanted to briefly state my support for the ordinance. And, you know, there's a couple of points I was going to emphasize. I think we're basically taken by someone who spoke a few moments ago. I have two young children. I'm not concerned with them being impacted negatively by the ordinance. I think the more it's normalized and less it's made taboo, the probably less attractive it would be to a young child or adolescent. And the other point that I was going to make, which was also taken by the same person, which was just to reiterate that the constitutional amendment to legalize marijuana in the state of New Jersey was passed with overwhelming support and favor. So just thought that was good perspective to keep in mind while considering this issue. So thank you for working so hard on these issues and hearing us all out. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jason. Next.
Next up is a phone number ending in 1710. Phone number ending in 1710, state your name and address. Hello? Hello, phone number 1710?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on, just one second. Are you still there?
Yes, hi.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. My name is Frida Zarni. I live at 229 Donaldson Street in Highland Park. And I would like to ask the council to please not pass this resolution, Number 32276. This, I'm totally against this entire pot ordinance. I really don't want any of this here. And I'm really disappointed that we're ignoring federal laws in order to impose this on all of us. I have children, it really truly frightens me that they have to walk past a pot shop to get to, say, Robert's Floral to pick up some flowers or to get a manicure in this town. It's really, it's disturbing that we would even consider putting, you know, a stumbling block in front of a child, that are children, minors. This is wrong, and I am strongly against this. And I really, I played with you not to put this in our beautiful town and to destroy what we have. We have something so special. Other towns, I've just never lived in a town that is so beautiful. And it's very disturbing on an emotional level even to see that people are just willing to take a risk like this. And, you know, and somebody mentioned that there's a small increase for minors. That minor can be your child. Is that small to you? If your child becomes addicted, you know, every tiny increase is someone, it's somebody who means something to somebody. And so I really truly, you know, ask you to, you know, really not pass this ordinance. And, you know, and I thank you very much for your time. I wish you a good evening.
Thank you. Next, Terry?
Yes, tripping on my own tongue. Sasha Rudy, you're up next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sasha Rudy, 247 Cleveland Avenue. I wanted to voice my support in favor of marijuana businesses. I've spoken about this before, but someone will always have a friend with a quote-unquote cool parent that lets or buys them pot or alcohol. So you can protect your kids as much as you think, but if they want to do it, they're going to do it. The black market is unregulated. You can just go on Reddit or wherever, and someone will deliver it directly to you. The weed could be laced with fentanyl, PCP, or a number of other things. They might get edibles that have far less or more marijuana than stated. Furthermore, getting through the black market could also lead to them trying harder drugs because they're offered by the dealer that's at their door. You know, I would rather have people getting their marijuana from regulated, secure, safe spaces that don't feel sketchy. If people are going to drive drunk or high, they're doing it right now. They're not waiting for a pot shop. Regarding property values increasing, a real estate company evaluated data from Zillow in 2017 to 2019 and found that home values increased $22,090 more in cities with recreational dispensaries compared to home values in cities where recreational marijuana is legal, but dispensaries are not available, the study says. With each new dispensary, a city adds property values increased by $519. So it's a whole article that was summarized by Marijuana Moment, but there's plenty of other data that can be found with a quick Google. Now regarding criminal activity, we live next to New Brunswick where there's a shooting every other week. If we were really concerned about safety, would we live so close, like a mile from all of that? I realize it doesn't really come over here, but, you know, it theoretically could at some point. So I feel like that argument is weak. Anyway, that's my piece.
Thank you.
I see, hi, I'm Baru. Up next, please state your name and address, please. Might need to unmute yourself. Hi, I'm Baru.
Terry, I think I hit it by accident. Sorry.
Your hand is not ready.
I'm going to lower my hand.
Okay, hi, Rosie. I suspected, I didn't recognize those fingers. All right. Eric Silverman, you are up next. Please state your name and address, Eric Silverman. Hello, Eric?
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you, Eric.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to allow a dinner guest to speak.
I'm sorry, it got bad again.
Turn this mic maybe to not to be near the mic. All right, Eric Silverman, 30 South Adelaide Avenue. And I'm going to allow a dinner guest of ours, who also lives in the building, who's a psychiatrist, to speak before I speak.
Hi, I'm Dr. Minnie Verter. I'm a Child Psychiatrist Board Certified. I'm attending at Richmond University Medical Center. So my concern is that using marijuana in the adolescence placed them at risk to become psychotic and possibly schizophrenic. And recently, I have a patient from our day treatment program who started smoking marijuana. He's been in and out of the hospital. He's at South Beach Psychiatric, and he's very psychotic. And whatever medication we're giving him, it's not working. And that's a very big concern, and it's a heartbreak. No one wants to have a psychotic child. No one wants to have a schizophrenic child. It's a nightmare.
Eric, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I'd like to address the issue first about finance, that it's good for the economy. Highland Park is not a company. It is not a business. It is a society. It is a polity. It is a community. We didn't buy shares that we can bail out just because something else is better. We bought, we all bought, or many of us rent or bought homes here to live here, to raise families for quality of life. And another issue I'd like to address is the idea, well, it's legal, that we have to accept it. That's tantamount to saying if you can't look them, join them. And as far as 70% of the people here voting for it, I'd like to leave you with the thoughts of perhaps the greatest scientist, one of the greatest scientists of all time, Sir Isaac Newton, who said, "I can predict the motions of the heavenly bodies, but I can't predict the madness of crowds." We saw what the madness of crowds did if 70% of the people voted for it.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Okay, next speaker, Ruth Matilski.
Hi, this is Ruth Matilski and my husband Terry Matilski. We live at 109 South Worth Avenue. And I am 73 years old, and I have been smoking pot for 50 years. I'm not psychotic, and none of the people that I know are psychotic, even if they started when they were children. My cousin started when she was 14. She got it illegally. She's not psychotic. Today, she's 50 years old. Some of these arguments are frightening in a way, because there was this movie, I don't know if it's come up, called Reefer Madness, in which this crazy behavior was ascribed to people who smoke marijuana. And I have drunk alcohol, and I have smoked pot, and I'm much more afraid of alcohol. Children go into Rite Aid, and I used to tell my kids, okay, on this side of the store, they sell alcohol to make you sick, and on the other side of the store, they sell you drugs to make you better. You can't, a kid can't go into a pot shop. And it has to be normalized. It is ridiculous that it was ever criminalized. And I do want to say that unlike other people, I do not think that Highland Park is going downhill. I love Highland Park. I've lived here, I guess now thirty years. I love walking around town and I would really love to be able to walk into town and buy some marijuana that I can smoke legally in my home. One other thing, oh, it's an herb. Cannabis is an herb. We criminalized an herb and there were political reasons for this. It had nothing to do with health or anything else. It's frustrating. It's really frustrating to hear this. If alcohol is legal and smoking cigarettes is legal, our children see cigarettes in half the stores in town. And the examples given by that first person, I don't know who he was, he calls him Delta Doctor from Colorado, I think he said about some girl whose parents gave her marijuana and gave her too much and she had some kind of episode. That is not evidence of, you, you can give a child too much of anything and you're going to make them sick. I don't think any of the parents on here who want to legalize marijuana in town and want to have the pot shops are going to feed their children.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I also don't think there's going to be six shops in town. I don't think the town will even be able to support six shops. You'd be surprised. We, we'll be lucky if we get one or two. Thank you very much. And I really admire you all for your stoicism throughout this process. I wouldn't want to be you tonight.
Thank you. Terry, do we have more hands?
Yes, we do, Mayor. I see eight hands raised. We're at fifty-three attendees. Dave Seaman, you're next.
Hi, my name is Dave Seaman, four twenty-seven Benner Street. Thank you so much for taking my call in the Zoom. And thank you for all the work you're doing on this. I wanted to voice my support for the ordinance in this town. And I, the reasons are that normalization is necessary in our town, state and country to end the war on drugs. The, the fact that marijuana is still illegal is crazy. It's a form of prohibition. It needs to stop. Just today, two people were arrested in a home inva-, uh, in connection with a home invasion in New Brunswick over on Delafield Street. They were there, they brandished weapons. They tried to rob the place because the house was selling weed. So they were looking for weed and they were looking for money. If there was a shop on Main Street where they could get weed, they wouldn't have had to go there. Yeah, yeah. And then the people in the house wouldn't have to be selling it out of their house. It's ridiculous. I think it would make for a safer community here and in New Brunswick. And I want to thank you for your stamina tonight. Thank you so much and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Jeff Boyd. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
My name is Jeff Boyd and I live at three thirty-seven Graham Street in Highland Park, New Jersey. I know you've all been there for a long time and so I don't want to take much more of your time. I just wanted to state my strong support for the ordinance. I think that what I'm hearing as this meeting goes on is people giving individual reactions of people they know in the negative attributes about marijuana, instead of actually looking at maybe the metadata. And I think the metadata actually shows positive attributes for distribution in businesses in towns. So with that, I'm going to let you go. I just want to let you know that myself and my family are strongly support the, um, the ordinance.
Thank you, Jeff. Terry, more?
I'm just doing my hand management there, Mayor. Um, next up, MSBF RCT. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Mary Botian. I just wanted to follow up on my previous comment. I did actually ask a question at the end of my statement and, you know, given that we do have these extra few minutes, I would very much appreciate if you would each take a moment to answer that question. And the question was, what would it take to convince each of you to actually change your minds about this? So if you would actually just take a moment to answer that question, each of you, that would really be appreciated. And I think we really do, you know, are owed that, um, given all of the information that's been back and forth for such a long time on all this. And you haven't budged on your position one bit. So what would it take to actually convince you that there is, that this should not be going through this way? If you could each answer, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Terry, let me let the council members speak if they'd like to. Councilman Hirsch, I saw your hand up. Did you want to address that?
Well, I, I don't have an answer for that. I just, and, and that's kind of what I wanted to say. We're in the process of a public hearing where we're hearing, uh, you know, some compelling arguments. So a lot of compelling arguments. And, um, you know, when Mary first asked that, she asked that at the very top of the public hearing where we had heard even less. So I don't think it's really fair to, you know, announce what it, you know, to, to state what it would take for us to reverse because we're, we're about to vote for or against something for the second time. So Mary, I know, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question. But, uh, you know, I'm sure you will hear your answer once, once we vote for the, uh, you know, we vote on this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify, it's not just a question from this evening, of course. As I mentioned, this has been going on for months and months and months and months. So the question is, given all of this information, for this great amount of time, what would it take for you to change your minds? Not just tonight, given all of this information you have been accumulating, the science, the medical facts and opinions that are very concerned about this, what would it take to get you each to change your minds? Because you seem very set on it. I think it's a fair question.
Well, I think, Mary, you'll see the answer to that if we have a vote. Certainly, as you mentioned, this has been going on for many, many months. And the council has received input, lots of input from medical professionals and regular citizens, young, adult. And all of that is going to be taken into consideration when they place their vote.
The other thing, yeah, the other thing, can I ask Gil? You know, when we have a new business come into town, um, you know, council members are very good about promoting that business and going there themselves and, uh, supporting that business. You go to four eighteen or you go to a laundromat or you go to the car repair, whatever it is. You know, can I see by a raise of hands, how many of you plan to be consumers at these new pot shops? And I think that's a fair question as well.
I can.
Excuse me, Matt. I, I, I'm not sure that that's an appropriate question for the council. But I will allow any council person who wants to speak to address that if they want to. But I, I really don't think that that's an appropriate question.
Why do, why do you feel it's not appropriate, Gil?
Because what a council person does on their own personal time has nothing to do with what they do when they're, uh, in their, um, role as council members representing the citizens that voted for them.
The question, however, wasn't, was the fact that you folks promote lots of new businesses coming in and that you have many occasion, on many occasions said, "I've been there myself and it's wonderful. We urge you to go." So that's the same type of a question that I'm asking now. Do you plan to be consumers there?
Hi.
I, I'm going to have to, um, pass on that question. You know, I, again, you're asking, do, do they plan to be consumers there? And that really is their personal decisions. I don't ask, and I wouldn't respect someone from the public asking any of them, "How often do you go into a bar in town?" It's the same kind of thing, Mary. So I'm going to move on. And, um, Borough Cloak, you said, uh, time, but that's just for the individual speaker, correct?
Just for the individual, yes. Well, it is nine P.
It's nine PM. How many more hands do we have, Terry?
I see six of which I believe two have spoken in the hearing previously.
All right. Well, let's just go with, um, the six that are there. And then we'll close the public comment on this so that the council can vote.
Okay, I saw a seventh squeak in just as you were saying. Let's see how we do. Uh, Dan Stern Cardinal, you're up next. Dan? Dan Stern Cardinal?
Hi, sorry.
Okay.
Hi, sorry. Uh, stepped away from the, from the desk for a second there. Um, I, I'm sorry to be taking up more time. I'll be extremely brief. This is Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty-one Harper Street. Because it came up and I mentioned it initially, property values. In addition to the data already provided from research briefs in economic policy from Cato Institute, July eighteenth, twenty eighteen, talking about conversion from medical to recreational. A research, our results indicate that retail conversion has a large positive effect on neighboring property values after controlling for property attributes and neighborhood characteristics. We find that after the law went into effect, single-family residences close to a retail conversion within point one miles increased in value by approximately eight point four percent relative to houses that are located slightly farther from a conversion. That's point one to point two-five miles. So it's a hyper local effect there. Uh, and then a second study, uh, from twenty eighteen, Chang twenty eighteen. Our estimates show that the legalization leads to an average, to an average six percent increase in housing values. And that's specifically for cities that allow for retail in states that have allowed it compared to cities that prohibit retail in states that have allowed it. So, uh, those are the two sources I'm working from when I say that we see a modest effect on property values in the positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry?
Looks like James Paulos is up next. State your name and address for the record. James Paulos, you may need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, this is Rita Paulos, forty-eight Skyview Terrace, Highland Park. I am opposed to the ordinance in every sense of the language that was written. Um, I'm going to put a little different spin. A lot of the people have said a lot of things. Uh, I'm not here to talk about who's responsible and who's not. And I don't think any of us are going to be able to identify who the responsible pot smokers are, who the responsible alcohol users are, because we know, we live in a town where we see a lot, okay? There was a shooting not too long ago. I've had my car broken into several times. So there's crime, there's crime everywhere. It's not just because we, because we live next to New Brunswick. What I want to talk about is I don't understand why you are all railroading this in. I just secured seventy-five more signatures from people who are opposed to it because they didn't even know that this was happening. With fourteen thousand residents in this town, you've heard from a handful of pros and a handful of noes. You need to do a better job of reaching out to all the public. There's no reason to rush this through. As far as the gentleman from Hazel and Leaf, he's a business owner. He's here to make money. Nobody's going to convince me that he's going to reach out to our children and make sure that they don't smoke pot and that he's going to do whatever he can for the community. It's one point three square miles Highland Park, a small little town. Our downtown is falling apart. It's dark. There's nothing appealing. And now you want to bring six marijuana shops. I just want to share with you, the reason why the storefronts are empty, it's because the taxes in the business district are very high. And a lot of the landlords cannot afford to rent places at low rents. So there's no relief for the business owners. Adding six marijuana shops so people can just go in and buy their cannabis? When there's three that are going to be approved in Edison, and I'm sure there's one that's going to be approved in New Brunswick, there's no reason for us to become the pot shop destination. I see our downtown as bring back the trees that were all flowered. Put in some new lighting, develop our downtown like that. You're making this decision on cannabis shops faster than you're making decisions on fixing our downtown. I just don't understand, I don't understand the logic behind it. And what I would like to see is I would like to see you put this to a vote for all the residents of this community. You're only hearing, you know how this works. The pro people are going to call everybody and say, "Call in and say that it's good and it's great for property values." And the people who are against it, we're gathering our signatures to call in why it shouldn't be. You need to slow this process down. I urge you not to approve it tonight. I urge you to reach out to all of the residents in this community, taxpayers, not just business people.
Rita, just to set the record straight, um, when cannabis was on the ballot, seventy percent of Highland Park voters voted in favor of it. So just, you know, I don't want you to think it was just a handful of people that, um, we've been listening to. Okay, Terry, next.
Marilyn? You're up next.
Hi, Marilyn Boker, two thirty-one Valentine Street. Lifelong resident with a few gaps. I want to first of all say that what I feel Mrs. Paulos just said has more to do with her husband's business as a Realtor than the actual tenor of Highland Park. Number two, the psychologist or psychiatrist from another place who spoke quoted one example of one child and made that seem like that's the norm. That's not the norm. That's an exception to the rule, as there can be with any medication that you might take or perhaps alcohol that you may drink if you have an adverse reaction. I'm obviously a pro, pro passing the legislation. And this is not a new topic. You've been talking about this, I don't know if it's years already, that everyone's had more than a chance to weigh in. It's been on the, it was voted on. It's been discussed at meetings. I haven't been there. But I know it's not a new topic and everyone has had more than enough time to weigh in. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Terry?
Looks like Eric Silverman is next. Please state your name and address. Eric? Eric Silverman?
My name and address is Eric Silverman, thirty South Adelaide Avenue in Highland Park. First, I would like to thank the members of the council and all the other people who have called in for this, participating in this session. And I'd like to address the issue that people have brought up about tobacco. The attitude that society has taken towards tobacco in recent years is after years of tolerating smoking anywhere, any place with any crowd, unless in the presence of volatile chemicals, is today we are restricting smoking. We have raised the age to twenty-one. There are far fewer places in which you can smoke. And it would be a move backwards in the opposite direction as opposed to being progressive to legalize marijuana, which unfortunately we have done already, or to make it welcome as the ordinance would do. This is something that should not be welcome in Highland Park. And I would say similarly with alcohol, all use of pot is for getting high. Most use of alcohol is not. Just think of a cold beer on a hot afternoon, a tasty mixed drink before dinner or a glass of fine wine. And I'm not trying to put you guys to sleep, but that's what I would like to say. I would like to thank you all for listening to what we have all had to say.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Terry?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Ray Board, you're up next. Ray Board, you have to unmute yourself. Do you want to speak? Ray Board? Please unmute yourself to speak.
All right, let's move on to the next person and come back to him if he can unmute himself later.
Um, so I, let's see, so we, looks like Tim McKinnon is up next. Tim McKinnon?
Am I unmuted?
You're good now. Please state your name and address.
Successfully unmuted myself. Tim McKinnon, uh, two oh one South Second Avenue. Just want to weigh in and just say that, you know, I think that there's probably a lot of last minute noes coming out of the woodwork, but I think that this process is unfolding. unfolded over a long period of time. I think it's been very careful. I trust all of you and, and, you know, your decision making in this process. And I think that any last minute jitters or screams or howls that we're gonna turn into a derelict town, I think probably should be not as listened to or considered because they may not have all the facts. Um, just wanna say that I think that this could be very good for our town and I'm glad that we're working together to get, make a plan for, you know, increasing revenue and ratables and all that business. So I, I just, just wanna, you know, chime in with my support for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Terry, how many, uh, hands do you have there now?
I've got three hands, Mayor.
All right, so let's, um, let the three people speak and then we'll move on.
Every time you say that, someone else raises their hand. Uh, Abby Stern Cardinal, you're up next. Abby?
Hi, Abby Stern Cardinal, um, Harper Street. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, um, for listening to everyone tonight. I do feel that, uh, you all have been respectful, um, both at this meeting and past meetings. Um, even though there have been, um, multiple meetings leading up to this with, uh, lots of hearings, including this one. Um, I actually think everybody who's spoken on both sides of this issue has remained respectful and not resorted to name calling, which I appreciate and has not been the case at every meeting. So I hope that continues, um, despite, um, people disagreeing. Um, I just wanna say that I really love this town. Um, I don't agree with the negative comments about the state of the downtown. Um, our, you know, our dark, uh, town, um, where, you know, there's no businesses. I don't agree with that at all. I think we have seen progress. We would like to continue to see growth and progress, um, and more development. But it's a great place to walk around, um, today. Just today I was at the tot lot with my kids and there were multiple families happy to be, you know, out in the nice weather. Um, I'm excited to raise my kids here and I'm not scared at all to walk past a dispensary, just like I'm not scared to walk past Pino's or walk past Rite Aid. Um, I have open and honest conversations with my kids about a variety of topics and that's what I plan to do uh, about cannabis and I, I will educate them myself and I will also continue to advocate for, um, community programs, um, to have conversations with our kids about, um, a, a wide variety of topics. So, um, thank you, um, and I do hope that this, uh, goes through.
Thank you, Abby. Okay. Terry?
Next speaker, Marilyn.
I'm sorry, I know I spoke before, but the only thing I forgot to say is that someone was saying the, on Facebook that, you know, this was the wrong place, but what I was trying to point out was New Brunswick is on one side. Piscataway is on one side and Edison is on the other side. So within a mile of Highland Park, I would think, although I did not measure or less, you'll be able to find whatever you need and then we don't get the tax revenue that will help us spruce up the downtown that everyone is having a problem with. And thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Marilyn. And Terry, this should be the last person then?
Uh, based on when you, what you, when you last called it, yes, uh, there are a couple of hands raised, but since you said that, yes.
So there would be one more?
There, no, no, I, you, you had indicated a point in time where you, we were gonna end. After you said that, a few more hands popped up, but we just completed the few that you indicated we should move ahead.
Okay.
I'm not being clear in a little.
Okay.
Terry, excuse me, have these people spoken already with hands up?
Um.
One has and two, two have spoken and one has not. So.
So let's let the person who has not spoken.
I guess I have it as two have not, yeah, I'm sorry.
So. So we, we keep teasing the end of public comment. I would just.
I think we should, I think.
Okay, okay, everybody, please. Ed? If there are three hands raised, should we allow all three to speak or are we obligated to just have those who have not yet spoken speak?
Yes, I, I would say those that have just not spoken, they should be given an opportunity, then you can close the hearing.
Okay, so in that case, I'm going to thank the person that wanted to speak again and let that person, I, I don't know who it is, um, know they can always reach out to the council at any time. And I will ask Terry to call on the two people who have not yet spoken.
Okay, Mayor, I'm just double checking my list to make sure. I'm doing my best. I'll just leave it to you that way. Evan Abraham, you're up next.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, yeah, I, I live at four sixty-one Harrison. Um, so, I mean, it's funny, cause this is, this is the first time that I've ever, I, I, that I knew that this town was, uh, looking to, to pass this ordinance to allow, uh, the cannibes and everything. I just wanted to voice, uh, my opinion that I'm one hundred percent against it. Um, I, I, you know, I, I don't know. Sometimes I feel that, uh, the world has gone mad. Uh, I was, I was brought up, uh, in, in a very, uh, I guess conservative, uh, conservative valued home. Um, and in, I, I happen to be a dentist, um, as well. So just from, from, so I have professional background. Um, and I was also a teacher at one time. And just in my opinion, uh, I think it's a terrible idea to open up these pot, that, to have cannibes available, uh, in our town. Um, to, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's a drug that, that people use and they, they start with that and it leads to other, uh, other drug use. Um, I've, I've, I've young children, I have older children. Um, I've always taught them, you know, never to use marijuana, cause I know what it does to your mind uh, in growing up, uh, the, the, the effects. Um, uh, you know, someone, yes, who's sick and, and needs something like that, they should, they should have access to it. And my opinion pharmacy, you know, pharmacies should be able to dispense it, but to just have shops around. You know, to me, it's, uh, an in, an insane progressive, uh, um, development in our society. Um, it goes, I think, I think, I think it goes along with a lot of things that, uh, have developed in our society. Um, but, uh, again, in bringing up, uh, a family, um, paying, paying taxes and all these things. Um, I just think that would be, uh, it would have a ter- terrible influence, uh, potentially on our town, uh, drawing, uh,
Thirty.
People, drawing people that, uh, you know, I wouldn't want to be coming to our town to, you know, to purchase it. I see it in my practice, all these kids using it, they come in, they smell. Um, they're, a lot, a lot of younger use their, it, it, like, their teeth are in terrible condition. They're not taking care of themselves. Um, and, and I'm, and it's getting worse and worse. Like, uh, I see, I see, I see the impact, the negative impact of it. And, you know, again, people are sick, yes, they, they should be able to use it. But, but, uh, just for, for, uh, you know, casual use at the, so in, in public.
Dr. I, I have to ask you to stop because of the time limit. Um, I do wanna let you know that all of the council meetings, in case you're interested in following further in the future, um, are advertised, um, on social media, but also in the, uh, local newspapers, the Home News, the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet. So, um, you can find, um, the listing of when we're having meetings in those media, but also on our Facebook page and on our website. Okay, so Terry, were those the two people who had not yet spoken?
That was one of them. Uh, I see two hands raised.
But we're only going with the two who had their.
I know, but an additional person raised their hand who hasn't spoken yet, I'm just telling you. Uh, so, but next up is Milagros Aguayo.
Hello, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Milagros Aguayo, one oh two South Second Avenue, Highland Park. Uh, my family and I are against this entire marijuana ordinance. It is against federal law and I hope you all both know. And also you, um, to listen to the experts, the scientists that spoke before, the psychiatrists and the doctor and all the sciences, and the same manner that you listen, I think, to the experts in science. In COVID, that you do encourage people to vaccinate it and you obey the, the science, what they say. I hope you, uh, listen to the science and both know today because marijuana is, um, a drop. And it's dangerous and harmful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Terry, you said there was one more person whose hand was not up?
Correct, it was someone who had attempted before and was having muting, muting issues. Uh, Ray Board? Please state your name and address for the record. Make sure you unmute yourself.
Four twenty-nine B South Second.
Say your name.
Very much, four twenty-nine B South Second, Ray Board. I'm very much against marijuana shops. Six in a row, very bad. I don't understand why you're doing this, guys. I'm against of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, um, so we're going to move on now.
Mayor, Ed had his hand raised, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed, did you have something?
Uh, Madam Mayor, before you close the, the public hearing, uh, I have two, um, statements that were submitted by residents that we were asked to read into the record. So I think we ought to do that. Uh, before I do that, however, I just wanted to enter a couple of comments in the record. Number one, we have received back from the planning board, uh, their report that they considered this ordinance at their meeting last Thursday and that they voted that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. That means that we can, uh, you can vote on this tonight and adopt it with a simple majority. Two, repeatedly, when this ordinance was done initially back in, in August of last year, which was really the ordinance that enabled this whole process to begin. We've heard repeatedly that somehow you are violating federal law by adopting the original ordinance and this ordinance. That is not the case. Our Jersey Supreme Court recently discussed whether or not the federal controlled substantives, substance act, the one that regulates at the federal level drug distributions, et cetera. Whether or not that was intended to preempt the state of New Jersey or adopting its law. And the court found that the federal law did not preempt the state law and that you are doing nothing wrong if you are using, uh, medical marijuana, if you're using recreational marijuana and if you're a municipality that's authorizing that. I thought we ought to get that on the record. We've heard it so many times and it is absolutely not the case. The other comment earlier about the class six delivery operations. We had indicated from the very beginning in August that we cannot prohibit the delivery of, uh, cannabis in town. That's what the state law says. We felt that it was not necessary to put a limit on the offices which might be fa- founded in the borough for delivery only services. Why? Because if you read the state law, if you get a license from the Borough Council for recreational or medicinal marijuana and you operate successfully for two years, you can deliver your own product. And we felt from the very beginning that there would not be a tremendous market in the borough for standalone, I wanna own a delivery operation. And the operations here, if they operate properly, can deliver their own product. I thought we ought to get that straightened out because we hear that, you've heard that now during both public hearings on the initial ordinance and then this mandatory ordinance. And finally, the two statements I have to read. One is from Peter Avery, four oh two Graham Street. Number one, given the stake at hand, the public has the right to know whether their elected officials have a conflict of interest due to their connection to the pot industry. Connections such as whether financing the pot industry-related business connections and/or campaign contributions from pot affiliates, funders. Uh, it is both re- reasonable and important that each council member and the mayor divulge what, if any, connections you have with the pot industry. Two, nobody is questioning the ability of people, uh, from smoking pot or using pot, the privacy of their own homes. Why doesn't the town experiment in participation with home delivery? Instead of storefronts, we can remove the issue entirely. I am referring only to drivers that would then come in from outside the borough to make deliveries. Three, if an economic argument, what economic study was done by the council and what are the projected costs? We have heard the towns get two percent. Why such a risk for so little? Or, given the unknown that with such a new, uh, legality as pot, what risk assessment has the town done and from whom? Five, what is the plan if black market drug dealers come up in Highland Park and undercut legal stores in town? Why does the council place such emphasis on pot stores? What efforts have been done to promote diverse businesses given the limited storefront space? Seven, oh, why do you reject the viability and practical business like seven eleven on grounds of not keeping with town's culture, yet willing to have multiple pot stores? And the finally, the final statement is from a Emmy Chatz, S C H A T Z, four four one South Third Avenue. I cannot be there tonight, but I wanna speak in favor of the ordinance allowing cannabis businesses to operate in Highland Park. Clearly, the opinions of the Highland Park residents are divided on this topic and neither side is likely to persuade the other. However, large, a large majority of Highland Park voters supported the legalization of recreational cannabis for adults. Allowing cannabis businesses advances the will of that majority. If the dispensaries are banned in Highland Park, anyone in town will be able to go to the dispensaries in New Brunswick and Edison. The symbolic gesture of outlawing cannabis businesses is not worth the inconvenience to medical and recreational Highland Park users and it amounts to a throwaway of the tax revenue that we sorely need. I imagine there are many residents who favor who, like me, saw that the ordinance passed and stopped advocating for it, believing that the matter was settled. I believe this, uh, has led to more comments at recent, uh, council meetings being against the ordinance. Uh, this voter, like a majority of Highland Park voters, is in favor of the cannabis business in Highland Park. Those are the end of this, of the statements.
Thank you, Ed. Um, all right, then, um, I'm going to, um, ask. Um, as for a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title.
No move. Second.
Um, we had the public hearing. Um, I am now going to ask for a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
Motion to adopt. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Somebody asked the question, um, and challenged all of council to answer it. I think the question is better phrased for everyone in Highland Park. Tim and Marilyn mentioned that this has been going around for discussion, after discussion, after discussion, comments. after discussion after discussion, comments, working on the ordinance, publishing it, reworking on it, uh, the first adoption, the changes, the schedules and all. Um, it has been going around for a long time. Um, so the question should be rephrased as not would it take for me to change my mind, because that makes an assumption, um, that I should just change it because some people oppose it. And we've said before, the, the reason that we're here, um, is to lead. And in this particular case, the leadership is, what is it going to take for everyone to change their minds and trust and believe in their fellow neighbors? The town is divided on whether we should have cannabis. There is an argument that about children and the impact on children. This is the wrong forum for that. The forum is the schools, because everyone who has said it's a problem has said the kids are getting high, and we don't have legal pot in town. So there, that's a problem that belongs in another venue, and it's not addressed. The root cause of this goes back, and I may be dating myself more than most, but a lot of people are listening to a dormitory in West Virginia in nineteen sixty-eight, when you would roll a towel under the door, slam the door, window shut, plug up the air conditioning vents, and then wake up some weekend and realize that one of your fraternity brothers or one of your classmates in another class had been arrested for marijuana in nineteen sixty-eight and spent ten years in jail. The genesis of that then moves into the drug courier profile, which ended up causing the epidemic of racial profiling in New Jersey, which then transited into the disparate treatment of people, which this license has attempted to not correct, because we can't correct it. But we could make up for it by special licensing to say, you know what? It was wrong. What we did is a society. And now we need to learn to trust each other a little bit more. We talk about the children walking by this. Well, they walk, they walk by the, the liquor stores all the time. Better yet, what's the first thing you see when you walk into Rite Aid from the back parking lot? You see the register, and then the next thing that you see on the horizontal stand, there's vitamins on this side and sexual aids and sex toys right on the stand there, promoting pleasure, promoting partnerships, promoting play with us, enjoy your nights with sensual labels on it. I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm saying that's the first thing your kids see when you walk in, and nobody's here screaming about that. It is time to trust each other as a Highland Park society and be ourselves and move forward, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Go ahead, Jen.
Councilman Hale?
Uh, thank you very much. You know, this has been a, a process that has been a very long process. We first started talking about this shortly after the voters of New Jersey and certainly the voters of Highland Park voted to legalize this. And we start, started talking, um, back then with many of the same people who were here tonight, many of the same people both for and against. Um, it, we have heard, um, uh, documentation and documentation again and again and again, and we have, have made adjustments throughout this. You know, at one point, there was a discussion of accepting all six of the different cannabis classes, and we're accepting two of them. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, that, um, that we've gone through this process. We've gone through, um, we've heard intelligent and passionate people on all sides, um, state their case. We've heard them, um, uh, we, we have, and we have, have made an attempt to craft a piece of legislation that is right for Highland Park, that fits Highland Park, um, and that, um, allows Highland Park, um, to, 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 to grow with this new industry. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I think this has been a long time coming. I think that we are, um, have, have done an enormous amount of listening to people. Um, and I, and I, and I think that that bears fruit in this led, this, this resolution. And so I'm very happy to support this, um, and I do support this, so I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, so many people for sitting through yet another public hearing on this important issue, um, uh, to, um, weigh in on a, you know, on a policy that frankly the borough has already adopted, um, uh, you know, more than six months ago. Uh, and I think that's important to, to remember that this is an amendment to an existing ordinance that, that, that the borough already has on the books. Um, however, um, I think this public hearing was more valuable because, uh, because of the time, you know, more people are around, uh, and clearly more people are paying attention. So it was really important to hear, um, you know, everybody's feedback, not, not only at this meeting, but at the last few meetings. Um, and, uh, you know, and to hear the really personal, uh, you know, uh, uh, takes on, on cannabis as, as a matter of policy, uh, you know, whether we agree or not, you know, the fact that, uh, you know, you were able to get up there and talk about your, your, your very personal beliefs on this issue uh, should be applauded, and, um, uh, you know, I just wanted to point that out. Um, I, I, um, I will, I will be, uh, you know, I, I am, uh, uh, proud to support this ordinance, uh, and I am a yes, but I just wanted to, 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 you know, so, so I'll spill the beans there. But a few things that, you know, just so people know that we were listening. Um, you know, and, and, and I just, I just have to point out that, you know, the, the public servants up here, um, are among the best public servants that I've ever, I've, I've, I've ever worked with and are responsive and, and look to hear as many opinions as possible. No matter how they walk into a situation, whether they agree with something or not, um, nobody up here, uh, would, would deny anybody ever for a meeting to talk about an issue, uh, more, you know, um, which is why, you know, it's, it's so frustrating that A, you know, we can't have these meetings in person yet. And B, um, you know, when we did reach out to some folks on this issue, some folks did not want to have a conversation. They wanted to keep it all in writing, and as public servants, as a community, that's just not how we can operate when we're trying to find a common ground or consensus or just a better understanding of where we're coming from. Um, you know, emails back and forth, talking about the legality of an issue is no, is not, is not a good way to, to, to have a community dialogue. So I just encourage anybody out here that, you know, when, when you do have, when you do have a problem, reach out. Um, speak with us personally. There are some folks, there, there, there are some folks who, who, who called in tonight, you know, who have, who have feelings on redevelopment, for example, where we might differ a little bit. But, um, I've had many, many really productive conversations with folks who might be on the other side of an issue, and we have just found either a mutual respect or areas that we can actually agree on, um, and move forward. Um, I just wanted to point out a few things that you might have heard tonight. Edison, uh, did approve three retail licenses, uh, but they're going to have a total of ten licenses going forward. Uh, seven of those are going to cultivators, manufacturers, wholesalers, distributors, and delivery. So Edison, compared, once again, once again, comparing Highland Park to Edison is not a useful exercise. They're very, very, very different, and Edison has a lot more space, and they have really opened the gates to cannabis. So I just wanted to make that clear, that, you know, the line that there's only three, no. It's, it's significant what Edison is doing, and they have obviously ample space to, to, to do so. Um, I just wanted to, uh, you know, keeping an eye on, 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 on problems as, as, as this, as this policy goes into place, um, absolutely. Uh, you know, the borough is going to keep a very, very close eye, working with public safety, working with our social worker, working with our municipal alliance, uh, to educate, to increase awareness, and to talk about cannabis, particularly in underage, uh, you know, particularly for, 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 for underage population. Uh, our municipal alliance, for example, uh, which focuses on, on, on alcohol substance abuse, uh, will, will, will devote attention to, to, to underage cannabis use. And this is for, and then what we're voting on tonight, once again, is for twenty-one and over, um, uh, recreational cannabis. Um, there was a, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm particularly uncomfortable with equating, um, alcohol and cannabis. Uh, the two are so different, so I, I was not, you know, and, um, I was not all that compelled by the idea that it's sick, you know, equating the number of licenses that we have. Um, because it equals the number of liquor licenses that we have is, 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 is necessarily what, you know, it's kind of apples and oranges. Um, but, um, uh, it's a fair, you know, if, if it's a metric that, that we use, that's fair. I, I, I frankly, you know, if we were to go back in time, I don't think I would want to put a limit, um, on licensing, uh, period. We don't have limit, we don't have licensing limits on, on other uses. And if this industry is being introduced in New Jersey to, um, uh, provide access to an industry, particularly to minority-owned and women-owned businesses, um, putting a limit on that, you know, sets, sets very certain restrictive parameters. And I thought that there was a very good commentary about how while liquor licensing is totally different, um, the, 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 um, uh, the wrangling it takes for a business to actually get their hands on a liquor license, um, it's, it's archaic, uh, it's underhanded, um, and business owners get taken advantage of big time when it comes to like, when, when, when it comes to liquor licenses, big time. So, you know, the two are not the same. Six is, is, you know, I, I totally understand to a lot of people, six sounds like a lot, and it does sound like a lot, and when you hear that number, it does. But I think that being restrictive on it is, 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 uh, you know, if we are creating a marketplace, uh, placing those restrictions, um, could limit access to, uh, to, 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 to very good business owners. I just wanted to answer, um, uh, Ms. Boetian's question about, about, about being a consumer, um, uh, at a cannabis dispensary. If they pay fair wages, and if they are, live up to code, and if they shovel their sidewalks, and they have a nice sign, if they're nice to customers, if they employ local, local employees, they pay fair, and, and, and they, and they pay minimum wage, um, then absolutely I will embrace that retailer. Uh, and if they show a commitment to the community, absolutely. Um, there are many, many retailers in town whose products I don't use, but I embrace because they are a good addition to the downtown. They are a good community partner, and they live up to the values that we, you know, that, that, that we stand for, uh, here in Highland Park. Um, and then just, um, you know, I, I, just, just to refer to what, uh, you know, um, Council President George said. Um, there was a comment about, um, you know, about not using cannabis, uh, no one uses cannabis, uh, 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 for recreational purposes, but, or for, for, um, you know, yeah, a couple of things on that. Uh, medical marijuana patients rely on marijuana for conditions like chronic pain, PTSD, cancer. Uh, it can serve as a less deadly alternative to opioids. Um, we heard a comment romanticizing, you know, a, a cold beer on a hot summer day, um, a hot toddy near the fireplace, uh, a cold rosé at the town fireworks. Uh, why, when more than fifty thousand Americans die from the health impacts of chronic alcohol consumption with two hundred, uh, with two thousand, with more than two thousand additional deaths from acute overdose, that we ignore that cannabis is safer than alcohol? Um, cannabis has never been shown to increase mortality, and there's never been a verified cannabis overdose death in history. And that's, and that's really important, and I understand the concern, and I understand what, you know, what folks who are wary of this, of, of, you know, a pretty big cultural shift in the consumer marketplace represents. But there's a lot of things that the borough can do moving forward, and there's a lot of reasons why we, why, why, why many of us feel that this is a, uh, that this is a good policy. And, um, again, I'm moved, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Um, just briefly, I think we also need to take in consideration, um, we talked to some of the medical marijuana patients, and we talked to, and particularly the veterans that have to stand in line for hours and hours at the current dispensaries in Woodbridge, for example, um, because there just, there just isn't enough locations. And, um, they're, they're looking forward to having a retail shop where they can walk in, although their medical clients, um, many times, depending on the time that they arrive at Garden State Dispensary, they're turned away. And these are PTSD, um, uh, veterans that are coming home that are looking for, uh, medical marijuana. And, um, it's unfortunate that even in our area, um, that they're still not being, they're still not being treated. And I just wanted to, uh, comment on that and just to, just to keep them in mind when we are considering, uh, this new, this new consumer, um, retail business in, in town. Uh, so I vote yes.
Okay, I want to, uh, take a moment to thank all of the public who spoke out, um, over these last years' worth of meetings about your support or your concerns. I also want to thank the Borough Council for listening to, um, all of our residents and, um, for being able to stay focused on what they felt would be the right thing for Highland Park moving forward. Um, I think, um, the council is absolutely correct in voting yes on, uh, the cannabis, um, ordinance that we have been discussing tonight. I think that, uh, it is important for us to note that, um, we take responsibility for making sure that the, um, businesses that come into this town are worthy of being allowed into our municipality. Um, the borough, um, social worker is already having conversations with the folks at the schools um, on programs that we can put together to educate our young people. Um, she'll also be working with, um, the, um, adult recreation programs, uh, programming here in town, um, for educational programs for adults as well. So, um, thank you again to all our residents and to the council members for staying focused on this and for voting for what you felt was right for our municipality and our residents. Okay, I'm moving on now to the ordinances that require a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the bond ordinance for recreation complex improvements or consideration of, for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the construction of various recreation complex improvements by and in the borough of Highland Park in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating two million fifty thousand, therefore, inclusive of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand and a contribution from the Highland Park Board of Education in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand bonds or notes of the borough to finance part, part of the cost, therefore, has duly been introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title and supplemental debt statement prepared by the Finance Director was filed in the Clerk's office on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
You're muted, Phil.
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, new track and field.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
I just want to say how important this is going to be for our entire community, not just that, um, the students who go to the high school. This, this new track and field is much needed, as I've stated before. So thank you all for that. Uh, Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the capital ordinance for improvements to the Highland Park Public Library for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for the improvement to the Highland Park Public Library, Library in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey in the amount of nine hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine state of New Jersey in the amount of $944,929 has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
The move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Finally, yes.
Councilman George?
Uh, yes, and just for, uh, for the public's notification, the, uh, amount of the, uh, uh, ordinance is listed as 944, uh, 1,929. Um, that is the total amount that was approved by the state, um, Library Bond Construction Act. Uh, as everyone knows, we did not get into the first round, but we did get in the second round. The borough's contribution, this is a matching grant, um, so that the program requires us to, uh, list the entire amount of the bond. Our co- contribution is only half of that. Um, so just to let everybody know, um, but as, um, Councilwoman Foster has noted, finally, we're getting some improvements to the library. And hopefully, we can also get some finality on the roof as well. So, I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Really exciting, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of the ordinance authorizing leases for 212 Raritan Avenue and 101 Raritan Avenue?
An ordinance pursuant to the New Jersey Local Lands and Building Law NJ SA 40A colon 12 dash 14C, authorizing leases for 212 Raritan Avenue and 101 Raritan Avenue by the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject an advertising ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
It's actually very exciting. Right in the smack dab in the center of town in an old abandoned building, they're going to be building boats. They're going to be teaching, um, uh, children, teens and, uh, women an introduction into the building trades where the highest demand is. Going to be an art gallery. The darn thing's going to get painted and used with something really exciting. And unfortunately, I'm general counsel to the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, I have to abstain.
Councilman Hale?
Let's build some boats. I'm in favor of this, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
To be sailed on the Raritan River once the Riverwalk is complete.
Road, road, go.
Road, I'm sorry. See, I don't know, I, I have a lot to learn about boats.
It's okay.
That's a yes. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, may I have a mo- motion, moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to, um, adopt items 14A through 14J?
The move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Now, we go on to the resolutions that require separate readings. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations?
The move.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yeah.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution urging swift passage of S330, which restores our energy tax receipts, which by the way, equals $11 million to Highland Park?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
You're muted, Elsie.
You're muted.
Yes. It's about, it's a long, it's been long coming, so yes, definitely, yes.
Councilman George?
Let us hope the legislature doesn't try to balance its, its own books on our backs. Um, also note, there are, there is overwhelming support. This resolution uh, is on agendas across the street in every municipality almost. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, it is now.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
May I ask to be excused for two minutes?
Please go ahead, Phil. Okay, it's now time for the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up. Uh, well, it's not going to wrap up by 9:00 PM tonight. So, um, Borough Attorney, um, can I put a limit on this, uh, to 10:15?
There, I don't, I guess. I think our bylaws require a motion, Ed, to go beyond 10 o'clock, is that correct?
It does, yes. And you can put a limit on it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so first, may I have a motion to go beyond 10:00 PM tonight?
So moved, I apologize for interrupting.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie, you okay with it?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, and then, um, sorry, I lost my place on the agenda. Okay. Um, and then we will be going into our second public discussion. Um, so, do I need, um, may I have a motion to, uh, limit the second public discussion till 10:15 PM?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, Borough Clerk, if you could let us know when we get close to that 10:15, please.
Yeah.
So now we're into the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes. They may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up, uh, by 10:15 PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. Uh, the Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. And please begin by telling us your na- first name, last name, as well as your address. Again, if you'd like to speak about a topic, any topic, uh, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Uh, first hand, I see belongs to Avi Wolf, although the hand went up before we got to this point, but I'm going to call on him because he's first in line. Avi, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Um, hi, Avi. Actually, this is, I'm Marner Schneider-Wolff, and I live at 403 Harrison Avenue. I just wanted to, um, share that I, I'm not in favor of the pot ordinance in our town, um, and I think that it should be rejected. I am, I am concerned. I, I, I do think it, um, definitely could affect families and our children and whatnot in town. And, um, and I just, I, I think that it is inappropriate form to discuss how it, how it can affect us. And children are very much a part of the Highland Park community, and we want to promote, you know, healthy lifestyles and whatnot. And I just, um, I'm not a fa- I'm not in support of this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
Making my way, I'm, I'm operating a little slower, I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, Abby Stern Cardenow, you're up next.
Hi, um, Abby Stern Cardenow, I live on Harper Street. Um, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about a couple of the things that, um, you guys just passed, like the neighborhood, uh, preservation, uh, program, the library, uh, funding. I really hope that that moves, uh, helps move things along and, uh, recovering that money for the town, that $11 million, sounds really important and helpful. Um, I did just want to continue, um, advocacy for our, um, small parks in town. I know that Matt Hirsch is, um, has that under his umbrella, and he's been advocating and working, um, toward this, but I know you'll, since you'll be discussing the budget, I did just want to bring it up. Um, I've spoken in the past in favor of improving, uh, the Tot Lot and the, um, Mal- Malamac Graff Park or Carcy Street Park, um, whichever name you prefer. Um, I am wondering if you can share, um, how much, I, maybe I'll be discussing this, but how much additional money has been allocated toward these parks and what the timeline is? Um, once that money, you know, is hopefully earmarked, uh, toward the parks for some larger park improvements. There have been some great, uh, first steps, but I'd love to see some larger improvements and make sure that the money is allocated for that. Um, even just today with the weather being nice, there were about five families who brought their kids after work, and, um, some of us had our kids eat there, um, which is great that the tables are there now, and I just want to see that continue and see added, um, equipment and, and, um, uh, the ability for families to continue to gather in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Uh, Borough Administrator, do you, can you pull out a number quickly for total park? It's all lumped together in, in the recreation budget?
I, I think it's a mixture, uh, Mayor, as we've been discussing. Some of what we've been talking about is maintenance, which is built into the Public Works budget. Some of it will be, we're putting on an amount in under the capital improvements budget, and we also have some grants out there. So, it's, it's, it's a real mix, but, but, uh, Abby is correct, we have been working on it. The folks at the community center, um, and rec department have been pulling together a plan and working with Councilman Hirsch on that.
And I would add that Councilman Hirsch has been a very strong advocate for this. Uh, Councilman Hirsch?
Yeah, I'll just add, uh, that, um, uh, we are, we are, we, we continue to have meetings with our, with our legislators and our meeting with, uh, uh, with our county folks, uh, to- tomorrow, uh, actually to, to, to discuss our, uh, our, our pocket parks as well. So, um, as we get through the budget, um, cycle, so we can't, can't quite answer all the, all, all those really good questions, um, but, um, uh, we will have updates shortly as we move forward, um, uh, as we, as, as we try to, uh, uh, assign more funding to, uh, to our parks, particularly as the weather gets warmer, and particularly as they are in need of upgrades, and particularly as we are investing in our outdoor spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Dan Stern Cardenow.
Hi, uh, Dan Stern Cardenell, 221 Harper Street. Uh, just very briefly, I want to, uh, first, I want to second what Abby just said uh, about the parks and, uh, the improvements, the tables and such are really wonderful, great to see such usage there today. Um, more improvements could be used. I really hope we see continued, uh, improvements in, uh, those two parks in particular. Uh, and then I just wanted to briefly say thank you for your work on the cannabis ordinance. I know a lot of work is going on behind the scenes with this, plus the, the very late nights every time it comes up. So, thank you. I'm really excited to see how things progress.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, next is Lisa. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lisa Kaplan-Noss, 123 South Adelaide Avenue. Um, since you mentioned it's getting warmer out, I wanted to ask if there's any intention of closing the streets again on South Third and North Fourth, um, like you did, you know, last year with the, the tables. Um, I know I haven't really enjoyed, you know, the community feel of that area being closed. Um, I know plenty of other people have too, so I was wondering if you could speak about any intentions around that.
All right, Councilman Hale, you want to address that?
Sure, I, I mean, we're, we're very much in, uh, going to look forward to, to doing all we can to close, um, the streets again like we have done in the past. There's a few, um, uh, legislative issues that we are, are working through, but we expect fully to have, um, both of those streets closed again, um, relatively shortly.
Can you speak to what types of issues there are on that?
Just the governing legislation that allows for, um, for those types of, of closures to take place. So, um, uh, the mayor and I've, and, and, um, Borough Administrator Javier have worked very closely with Senator Deignan um, and Senator Sarlo, um, and are in the process of, um, uh, doing some authoring of some, some language that will, um, make those changes possible.
Is the reason that it was able to be closed in the past because of a pandemic? So, is it emergency legislation?
There's, there's two different aspects of it. One was the emergency legislation. There's also other aspects. Uh, another law, um, by Senator Sarlo, um, that allowed for, um, for the closing of streets, um, up through November of 2022. So, we're, uh, working on some, some, uh, uh, clarifications on that, so.
Okay.
I just should know, Lisa, Lisa, you should know that we're ver- working very hard to reopen those tables. I think they are very important to our community, and so does Senator Deignan.
We, we, we do. We know how important they are. We know how much, um, how valuable they are to our community. We've heard some from so many people, um, of, of how much, um, we want them closed again, and we're doing everything we can to make that happen.
I really appreciate hearing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, anybody else?
No, Mayor, I don't see any other hands.
All right. Okay, so I, um, we have one item on the work session for tonight. Council, would you like a brief five-minute, um, recess?
Yes.
Yes, right? Uh, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, you're raising your hand, or you're voting yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one quick comment, because I had mentioned it at the beginning, um, of the meet, and it's quite disappointing that we had over 50 attendees here and no, and only 16 stayed for the budget, when this is extremely important year. And later on, when you go on to say, when you come to the meeting in October and ask, where did my money go? I had said what was going on tonight. So, it's, it's quite disappointing that Darty of the crowd left when we're talking about the 2022 budget, and yet in the Facebook groups, you can yell about the taxes back and forth with each other. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I look forward to face the complications about the lab work and, uh,
All right, let's, let's all take a five-minute break. We'll see you back here at 10:14.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Do you want me to hang around, or can I drop off since it's the budget?
You may have the rest of the evening to yourself, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Good night.
Night. Night.
I will support any store in town that shovels its walkways when it snows. That's criteria. And picks up trash on its properties. And participates in arts in the park. I'm sorry.
The list is getting longer, Matt.
I'm just thinking of the. Can I mention S S three thirty really quickly, like not without, without, you know, not, not really an opinion on it?
Are we allowed to do that? I'm not sure we can.
No, okay. I thought we already backed that, Matt, didn't we? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did. Yeah, okay. Absolutely.
Okay. One, two, three, four, we are missing Stephanie. But let's get, oh, here she comes. Very good. Okay. So we're in the work session portion of our meeting now, Terry.
You are correct, Mayor.
No, I meant Terry, it's, it's yours.
Ta ta. I was expecting one more fanfare, excuse me. Sorry, I had to bite on an apple and get a little blood sugar going. So, um, you all received, you know, the budget worksheets. I included with that was a memo with a little bit of an overview, and I thought I'd just start with kind of the high, really the top level, just to recap for your benefit, but also anybody else wanted to listen. This, the assumptions, you know, the, the budgets, all numbers all added up. Hold on, let me just make sure I have the right PDF in front of me, excuse me. The budget that I presented, basically when we took into consideration the municipal needs, and I don't have unfortunately numbers yet from the county or the schools. I did request the information. I know the schools just only this week received information on their state aid allocations. So I anticipate hearing more specific numbers from them. So I basically, to be conservative, I assumed two percent increases for county and schools. However, there have been many years where it hasn't been two percent. So I just want to emphasize that's conservative. But essentially, the amount to be raised by taxes for municipal purposes came in at one point nine eight percent with the budget you represented. And I, with the assumption that everybody else was going to come in at two percent, which I again, I'm assuming those numbers not knowing otherwise. And so it could very well be lower, but it could be higher. I don't know. What we were looking at in terms of the overall increase, at a one point nine seven percent increase in the amount to be raised by taxes, which when you try to translate that to the average residential assessment, which is that number we try to look at every year, has an increase over all forms of tax, meaning municipal schools, library, you know, the dedicated library tax and the open space for the county, we're looking at an eighty, basically an eighty nine dollar increase in the tax bill annually for the average residential assessment. The municipal portion of that being twenty four dollars and three cents. So I just wanted to kind of start with that because I know that's often kind of the big picture we want to have in mind when we're thinking about the municipal portion of the budget. Phil, you raise your hand, sorry?
No, you answered my question. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, so that's the first sheet in that workbook that I, I, I shouldn't say handed out. We've gone digital the last few years in your inbox. Some high level points, and then I'll, I'll rely on you guys to answer, ask questions of me. We did have, you know, a decrease in revenues in 2021 areas where we saw that were in code, construction code permits, people were pulling permits. That was down about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of what we would see, I saw last year, and last year was down. So we have been kind of on a slump. Our hope is that maybe that, you know, things turn around, but we don't know. So we, we can only anticipate kind of based on the prior years collected. So we've, we've got kind of a loss in that area of revenue this year. We've got a reduction in interest on investments in part because we lost a really awesome interest rate we had for two years in September. And we're, we're, we're getting about point five when we're getting, I believe it was one point eight percent before. So, you know, unfortunately, we can't anticipate the same revenue as last year. We'll, of course, continue to pursue as good a rate as we can get, but as everybody knows right now, the interest rates aren't all that. So essentially, in looking at the, the bigger picture, we were able to utilize, because we had rebuilt and grown our surplus, we were able to utilize more surplus than in prior years comfortably in order to kind of compensate for some of those losses. And we don't believe we utilize more than we can comfortably rebuild and maintain this year. I would have normally had Lori here. She will be at the, and I should just take a step back. Stephanie, you mentioned this is a budget discussion, but we also have the introduction on April fifth at the next council meeting, at which time I'll also do that short presentation with some of those pie charts and things that we've come to get used to. So I just wanted anybody who was still listening or will listen to the meeting in, in hindsight, there, there is going to be additional presentation and the public can speak at those meetings as well at introduction. So, so that's kind of the, kind of broad brush on revenues. I guess I could go into some areas, but I could, I could use a little guidance because I only heard that from all folks. So I guess it would help me, you know, to get a feel for how we, you want me to go on this discussion?
So I, you know, let's take a step back for a second, Terry. So all of the budgets that Terry has submitted were based on numbers that they, she got from each of you, from each of your committees, plus a look at the departmental budgets that came in, which, you know, most of which you, you were involved in. And the overall, as she said in the beginning, the overall municipal increase is a, it's under two percent, which is the goal we always set for the administrator on a year to year basis. We try not to have the municipal portion of the taxes increase more than two percent. So I think she did a good job holding things down to below two percent for the municipal taxes. I did, by the way, have a brief conversation with Christina Terry. And she did mention that she is trying to keep her budget at no more than a two percent increase.
So are my assumptions in here are probably workable for the purpose of the overall tax.
Correct, correct. So are there, Terry, were there any areas that stood out? I don't have.
Sure, I can walk through. I just didn't want to assume where.
Yeah, talk about the things that stand out, like major savings or major savings, you know, I'm sure the council.
Absolutely. Um, couple things. I, and what I would mention, I did hear back kind of on some very de minimis changes to a couple budget lines. One was additional monies for the Arts Commission and the amount of three thousand. They have a pretty aggressive mural and, and street art program. Seems like they have a plan for doing it. And so it's, I, that's not going to really impact this outlook much. And the other one was for the Shade Tree Commission, which has always had a very modest budget, but this year are looking for an additional twenty four hundred dollars to bring on a certified tree expert to advise us as we apply for a fairly sizable grant from the state of New Jersey for another large tree planting. So both of those things I think are very worthy. I hope you will agree, and I, I intend to. I didn't want to send you guys new sheets just for those two amendments, because I thought it might confuse everybody if the numbers changed, but I just wanted to put that on the record. The other thing I want to mention that will change, but it doesn't affect the tax outlook that I mentioned previously. We, I'm proposing that we utilize some of our American Rescue Plan funds for our portion of the cost of the Woodbridge Avenue paving project, which will include the much needed side street paving, which I know a lot of you have brought up at many, many meetings, especially the one on South Eleventh, which we all know is in terrible need. The county is very interested in getting that project done this summer, I believe, no later than this fall. So they're, they're moving ahead. We're also including the water main project, but I'm proposing in the budget that we utilize ARC money for our share of the construction of the road project, which is approximately five hundred thousand dollars. I forget the exact number. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but that'll be basically an expense offset by revenue. So it won't affect the tax outlook I presented to you previously. So I just wanted to put those modifications on your radar. I will send you guys. I was hoping to get input from the committee tonight and then resend the sheets with any amendments following this meeting. And those would be the, the numbers we use going into the introduction of the budget. So in terms of highlights on this year's budget, one is one that comes up periodically, the library budget. We, we've held that flat. I, I will note what you all noted is we also have put in a fairly sizable bond ordinance to cover our share of the renovation costs. We've also been working very closely on addressing some of the other building issues, and we will look forward to partnering with the library. It's been a very good working relationship. But I just want to put it out there that the, there's no proposed increase in the library operating budget in this budget here in front of you. Some of the costs that just routinely go up, and I know I probably say this every year and I'll say it next council meeting when I do my more formal presentation, cost of pension goes up. And for example, in one of our area, in the police fire, a pension payment went up by sixty three thousand dollars this year over last year. So that's already kind of a sizable increase. We did have contractual agreements that necessarily, you know, salaries and otherwise, that also just routinely require numbers get bigger, not smaller in those areas. Let me see, in terms of police salary and wages, because I know this does come up, those are the only increases there are related to, to contractual increases. No new hires are included in this budget. We did include funding for fire director or equivalent position to be determined, name to be determined, as well as to get us up to where the staffing level where we can have at a minimum two persons on at all times from the paid fire department. We're working our way towards that with our hiring that Elsie mentioned earlier in the meeting. And so but that's, that's something that we're building up over the next couple of years, kind of that workforce in the fire department. So that's kind of a, a change there. Um, we did propose a increase in Public Works of one person, one, one laborer position, but that can be, yet to be assigned in terms of what their core responsibilities are. But I think as we all can see, we're, we are increasingly putting demands on our Public Works Department. We have a lot of goals for our town that we need their support for. And we just need more staffing to do those things, and that's proposed in this budget. We do have an increase in motor pool to reflect the growing costs of fleet maintenance. I mean, it's just reality of life. Things get, are getting more expensive. And I won't lie, in the motor pool budget are, some of our fire equipment, our, our fire engine is, are aging and are increasingly requiring more to maintain over time. Let me see here. We have increases in debt service, which do account for a large chunk of an increase in the budget, I, I would note to you. And I'm sorry, my tired eyes are having trouble with my small notes here. We did put some increase in the economic development OE in part to reflect some of the priorities as part of a neighborhood preservation plan, as well as the redevelopment work for some of our consulting services that we need, anticipating some additional expenses in that area this year. So those are kind of my really top level. I can't help but feel like I'm missing something important. I apologize. So with that, I, I would ask maybe for those of you with your individual buckets, if there's comments or questions you'd like to offer, that would be fine, or Mayor, if you have any questions.
Terry, you and I have gone over this before, so you, you answered all my questions.
Matt? Hey, I'm sorry, I have to be more specific.
Yeah.
Everybody's flipping around on the screen right now. Upsetting. I'm sorry if I seem like taking it back. It's because it's flipping around.
So I, I mean, overall, I, I mean, I, I think this is a.
So I I mean, overall, I mean, I I think this is a a a budget, a solid budget. There are a couple of things that I just wanted to ask timing wise. And then sort of budgeting to me is sort of a part art and part science. This seems to me to be like a very conservative budget. Meaning that there is money that we were were anticipating much less than we might get.
Talking about revenues?
In revenues and 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 that we're under anticipating revenues and over anticipating costs. And that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that. It I I I'd like to know if if how we can get sort of as we're moving through the year, sort of how we're doing against those those particular hedges, because you know, like the the there was one where our current budget, our current expenditures for last year were two hundred and forty eight thousand, and we budgeted two hundred and forty in terms of, I I can't remember where that was, but it was it seemed to me that that we were being very, very conservative, and I'd like to just see as we're going along, if being that conservative is really where we want to be in terms of both revenues and expenditures.
Can I respond a little bit to that? And that's a good question. I'll I'll make sure we Lori is definitely our, for everybody, our CFO, Lori Majewski. I knew this was going to be an extremely late evening, so I told her I wouldn't call her in the middle of the night to wake her up to the work session. But she will make herself available, obviously to any council members, but at the at the here, at the both the introduction and the hearing for the budget. With regard to the anticipated revenues, the way the the stating wants you to look at revenues is don't try to anticipate things that you didn't get last year unless you have a really solid basis for that. And so I know you had asked about potentially cannabis licensing. Could we anticipate the revenue? Well, we don't have any experience. We don't know. Will six like six businesses that we would potentially have revenues from, not talking about taxes, just talking about the licenses, just like we do alcohol licenses. What what could we could we have it anticipate that? Because, you know, we know there's some interest, blah, blah, blah. But until we know, we don't, for all we know, all the businesses will flunk out. And now we've anticipated, say, sixty thousand dollars that we don't achieve. That's what what you get reviewed by the state. They don't like to see shortfalls. So there is a conservatism there on purpose, because the other thing on the on the expenditure side, if you cut it to the wire every time, you don't rebuild your surplus from year to year. And so that's what we were able to, because we had some savings in prior year, we were able to utilize a little more surplus in this budget, because on that, we were not conservative. If you look at that number, we actually utilized a decent amount of surplus because we had comfortably regenerated it from the prior year, and we had it as a cushion, which we, in a year where we needed it, we were able to do it and still maintain a level of surplus that Lori wasn't too concerned with. So I guess that's my kind of more novice answer, but that I think that's, I just want to express a little bit of of reason to the to that.
I just, I didn't, I didn't want to, I'm I'm not saying this is a, as a let's not be that conservative. Let's, you know, go out and spend all the money that's there. I what it what I wanted to do is to just I think we should be conservative. I like the fact that we are are able to have, to be able to spend a surplus when we when when we need it, the rainy day and and all of that. I'm just sort of thinking that as we are moving forward throughout the year in the budget process, as we're moving, as we're seeing those
Yeah, yeah. So let me, let me, let me please get a word in edgewise between the two of you. Keep in mind that this budget has to be approved by DCA. And there are certain things that they look for. So being conservative, but not being ultra conservative is is a good thing as far as DCA is concerned. And then as as Terry was saying, there are the quarterly reviews that we go through to see where we're where we're falling behind or where we're ahead. And I think, Terry, you can correct me on this, but is there's a timeframe? Is a period at which if if we're way under in one area, we can ask to have that money moved to another area.
Do you have the ability to do budget transfers starting in October or November? Excuse me for not knowing. I think it's November. November. But usually when we do those is because we have a shortfall in a line over here, and we can borrow from over there to cover that shortfall, because we had an unanticipated expense. Let's say it's a motor pool. We had a major blow up and we had to to resolve it. But yeah, we do have the quarterly finance meeting. Actually, I just confirmed with Stephanie the schedule, so you'll be getting, I think you're on the committee. I'm not a hundred percent sure. And we always go over revenues, but we can also go over expenditures. It's just hard because some of the expenditures are really front and back loaded, so it's not always the perfect thing, but we we can certainly add that to the presentation at the quarterly finances.
I I I'd certainly appreciate that. And then I'll be real quick, and I don't want to. We don't have the capital budget, the what the or county money. I guess, Gail, you were saying you thought that the the school money, they were going to be at two percent, but we still don't have the county money, and we don't have a specific capital. And I'm just wondering if you have an ETA on that of when we're gonna.
That'll be coming out to you this week. I I actually just haven't had a chance to run it through the mayor and the admin committee. So as soon as the the county dollars, I don't know, I put, I I emailed the CFO for the county to know if he has estimates for the towns yet. Some years they're more willing to share than others. We just heard the schools are staying within two at all possible, if not coming in under. So for now, I was hoping, and I basically, my last request to the county was, I I would really like this information prior to introduction, because I know this is an important question for the government. As for the capital budget, the truth is, I'm not anticipating, with the exception of those parks improvements, which are relatively modest in terms of their overall size, it won't look a lot different from the one you all saw last year, which is why I didn't highly prioritize getting it out.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I got one real quick one and then is there a way in the budget presentation when you when you give it on the the fifth? I noticed, or I I I guess I had to ask that we made six hundred thousand dollars more in grants this year than we did last year in a variety of grants. And I know that doesn't affect tax rates, because those are money that, you know, the money comes in for a grant. We spend it on a particular thing. But I I think the public would, it would be helpful for the public to know how much more successful we were this year in terms of the grants that were coming in and what those, you know, obviously what those are going to be. But the way that the that 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 I get the budget seats, I I felt like I couldn't find that easily. So I would just encourage, as you're making the presentation, that's pretty amazing to be six hundred thousand and one, what, one point nine million in but in grants? And we're six hundred thousand up from what we were last year. That's that's worth talking about.
Happy. That's a good one. And I know the mayor also likes to use that in the annual letter that goes out with the tax bill, and we will certainly include that as well. But I do, I I what, it is one of those tricky ones, because it's in and out, you know, so you're right. It it doesn't, it doesn't sing out to you when you're looking at what's the tax bill, but these, there are some pretty impressive programs, and those grants are, we seek those on a rolling basis, and I can even tell you some of the other ones where we've got irons in the fire on. So we're really stepped up our, and I should say we, it's really Emma as well, and community services folks, we've really all been stepping up, looking out for new opportunities, working with the boards and commissions where we can find partnerships there to try to seek out these opportunities.
Great. Okay, I'm done.
Doing more with more.
I think Stephanie has her hand up.
Yes, um real quick on some, for the current, for the, so for the current fund there where I saw salary and wage, like almost every line is salary and wages increased on there. As far as like when we have opening, oh, like current employment and openings that we post for jobs with the borough, like how is that? How is that determined? On the
On the budget or in the process of hiring?
Like when we're doing the hiring process with that, because that ultimately affects the salary and wages line.
Well, when I, if if I'm budgeting for a position that we don't have a person yet, like it's not an existing stat, because if it's an existing person, I know how much they make and how much their increase is going to be this year. If it's somebody that it's an open position that we haven't hired yet, I usually put in, I may err a little bit on the high side, because we usually have a salary range, as we have an ordinance that establishes a guide, and then we 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 try to kind of find find a balance with what we think level of experience we're going to attract and and what we're looking for. So in the budget, if there's a a position in there that is not filled, I usually try to anticipate what I believe their salary will be. There will be times, and I try to stay within that based on the salary ordinance, as well as guidance from the admin committee, I don't actually move to hire posting ads and things without going through the admin committee first, and these would all be things that were in the budget already, unless otherwise noted, in which case we would we would bring it out more specifically. I don't know if I answered your question. Not any feedback, and I'll try to answer it.
Yeah, yeah, I think I I believe so. I just, um, when I looked at for the most part, your summary on there, salary and wages was almost up in every other line there.
When you, yeah, because every year, everybody goes up at least two percent by and large. So that you're going to see, if you see something greater than two percent, it's either a contractual increase, which many of our salary guides for the unions will are two percent. The guides are actually more than two percent. For police, Teamsters, and DPW, in many cases, unless you're at the top, in which case you get typically the two percent unless negotiated otherwise. If there's another one, it could be an additional personnel anticipated, like a new position. For example, I know Matt had asked a question about an easy one was communications. Why is that up? Well, we anticipated hiring a extremely part-time person to support us in council chambers and the planning board meetings to do the videography once we go back in person, because we're reworking that whole system. We have a whole new setup. It's about a five thousand dollar. It looks like a high percent increase, because there's only two staffing people in there. So a good way to look at the salary and wages are, you know, if it goes up more than two, there might be a reason, and there were a couple of places where, for example, in admin, it went down a lot. But that's because we removed, we moved a person from admin and put them into finance. So that's why finance also went corresponding up on salary and wages. So I tried to, I tried to look ahead and see where those red flags to you guys might be in the in the cover memo. So in general, though, it's contractual increases or negotiated ones, you know, based on specific situations employees and or and or new positions.
I think like for this year, as we take in consideration of inflation on our residents gearing up for the twenty twenty three tax year, also the utility increase. New positions should come to council as a whole. I I it's it's an ongoing cost for us. And in twenty twenty, I think if we look at across corporations, you know, people did, that salary and rages were the first thing that corporations looked at. And it's it's very, it's it's expensive for us, and not saying, you know, just in general, certain departments, we know we need, we need firefighters, we need, like, there's not even a thought there. But certain departments and positions need to come to council as a whole for discussion before we're hiring.
For this, and the process is, it goes to the admin committee, and Stephanie, you know, you're invited when we if we're discussing budgets at the at the admin committee. And then from the admin committee, a recommendation would go forward to the council.
You mean on agenda for a vote?
Uh, no.
Are you talking about, before we put it in the, I guess I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Are you talking about positions that didn't exist before or empty positions?
I'm talking about for this year as we gear, we're, so we're doing this year. I saw where I saw, I'm looking at twenty twenty two, right? And so if we bring on more people in this year will be for next year, I mean, that's why I'm saying everyone, for if your department is increasing and you're bringing in a new person, it should come to council as a whole.
Well, it's part of the budget proposal here, which is for all of you.
Yeah. A new person, a new person is different from a an increase in the payroll of existing or replacing someone who left the organization.
Even replacing, like we know those things should be up for discussion, especially if it's not an essential role to the borough. Those things should be should be up for discussion as a whole.
Well, I'm sure that when a position is open, the appropriate council liaison to that whatever department that is is involved in those discussions, and then he or she would take it to her council committee. I don't think we should, it doesn't make sense to me for every position that's getting refilled to have to wait for a council meeting to approve something. I mean, most of our positions are not really, you know, high salaries.
Every little bit adds up, and then the long run is costing us when it's two percent every year. Salary and wages is a big part of our budget.
I hear what you're saying, Stephanie, and I invite you to join the admin committee.
I never get a calendar invite.
Well, you should have, because we've made it a policy, and Phil, you can chime in. But, you know, we, years ago, whoever was the finance chair is the one that's supposed to get invited whenever we're talking about personnel in the admin committee. So Terry may have fallen through the cracks, but when we do talk about increases in payroll and that sort of thing, the finance person should be invited.
Just to add in, with regard to DPW, Mike and I actually started going through the budget and doing the planning as to what we felt we needed to accomplish, because quite honestly, we know we've been short workers of DPW, and the demands on DPW from the public to do this project, that project, the parks, the garbage, the trash, et cetera, has gotten to the point where we we needed somebody, and we proposed two. And we lost. We got one. But we found the one by restructuring what we had, because we had some very high salaries of people who had retired. And rather than leave them on the books and then say, well, we need somebody else, we actually restructured the salary structure, and I think we came in without the sheets in front of me. We came in just about even by adding a another worker and by and and in fact, there was a debate about whether we should have two and be a little less conservative with our capital retention, because the snowstorm did scare the daylights out of us for cleanup, which took over a week. I was a little less conservative on holding a lot of that back, so we could get a second worker and and actually dedicate that to cleanup and so on. But we lost, you know, administration won on that. So to that extent, Steph, and everyone else, the extra worker for DPW is actually in the budget that when you vote on that, you'll be approving the extra extra slot or not.
Right. So that that goes to Terry's point about the council voting on the budget, which includes any additional new hires. Uh, Matt?
I I don't want to speak for Stephanie, but when you say that you lost, where did that game take place? Is I think what she's at, like, like was that in just in the admin committee? Was it between you and Terry, like?
When you lost, I guess we're talking in very general terms. Really struggle. I'm I'm trying to understand. It feels like somebody's a macro point, but I I'm not, I'm I'm not trying to be dense. I'll be, I want to use an example. We had somebody move, we had a position open in the tax office, somebody moved from downstairs upstairs, and now we have a vacancy downstairs. And we've reconsolidated some positions for to to basically try to better take advantage of the time, planning, zoning clerk, and housing clerk. Is that the kind of thing? You know, like, that's that's something I thought an administrator should be doing with the advice of the and the mayor and the admin committee, you know, that kind of thing playing within the budget that, you know, was already established. So I guess that's, I guess, what I'm not quite understanding where the concern is and what level, you know, that.
I won't speak for Stephanie, but I do. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
I I think what Terry is trying to say is the, you know. She's moving things around within the approved budgets. Um, I think what I'm hearing, when I'm hearing from Stephanie is when there's a new position hired. Stephanie, and again, I don't want to speak for you either, but this is how it landed in my head. When there's a new position hired, she felt that the council should be made aware of this. That's what it sounded like you were saying.
No, I think I I think Stephanie is is. Is saying that if we're looking at a new hire of any sort. That council should vote on it and and you know, and a lot of times we have, we've voted. To create at one point in time, the director of public safety or O E M or something like that some years ago, we voted on that and. Voted on a resolution to appoint somebody for that. It it a point I was trying to make and maybe it's eleven o'clock, it's four hour meeting and I've been working close to eighteen hours straight, so. Uh, but the point I was making is we are to crew, we created one new position. We wanted to, Mike and I wanted to. You know, we got one and we got that by strut restructuring. We actually could have gotten to. But Terry felt and the mayor felt that we needed to hold back a lot. Uh, for against the uh, consideration of overtime. For either flooding or snow because we have both had, we had both those issues last year. Um, until I say we lost, well, Mike and I didn't get two people and we wanted to. Uh, we got one, but we got that one by restructuring to the extent that we really don't show much of an increase in the budget. Beyond what other departments are increasing for salary and wages. Everybody goes up two percent and if you know, don't want to reflect that two percent, you have to lay people off.
What about the case? And and I I I'm generally asking, I I don't know the answer to this is. Mayor, you're 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 in your interns. So how um, I'm getting your name wrong, who left? Jetl, right? She was replaced, but was she paid?
Yes, she was paid.
Okay, so one of the confusions I had is that I thought she was an intern working for school credit or something like that. I didn't realize that she was. A a a an employee. And so when the employee, when the notice came out to replace her.
Yeah.
I didn't know. That that was just a replacement. I thought it was a new position.
Oh, no, it was.
So my confusion and and it was that I thought that that was a new position. That I'd never, never heard of and and. And I I I wondered what was going on, so.
So you could always call me.
I could, I could, but.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, like, just because someone, do we need to replace them, especially in a year like this? That's what I'm saying. In a year like this, where people were assessment is going to go up fourteen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars plus. We have a utility bill that's going to go up fourth quarter that we're looking at. That's that's what I'm saying. We're paying people thirty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars here. Let's hire this person. Let's hire that person. We we we. I I.
And so I just want to explain one thing about assessments and Stephanie, you know this. There are some people whose homes are going to go up and there's some people who hope whose homes are going to go down. The the houses that have seen vast improvements over the years that have not been properly assessed. We'll we'll see increases. Folks who couldn't afford to fix up their houses or kept them the same. They're not going to see increases in their assessments. What we're hoping, what what will probably happen is all the apartment complexes. That have not been assessed in what, twenty thirty years? And um, have been selling their their properties for way, way more than they're paying taxes on. Those people are prob, those uh, apartment complexes are probably going to be affected. And um, which raises a whole other issue of, you know, how are are. Protecting our renters from uh, price gouging, so.
Yeah, I I under I understand that, but on top of just everything, every like, we can't just. Every year, there's other expenses in the budget. We have to look for lines where we can cut some of these things where we can. And I get it with, you know, the grants and everything, but just for us to have the the open discussion about. Some of the positions, the biggest is salary and wages and also the utility budget. We know what happened. When and a few years ago, we had to put the surcharge on. We we I I I mean.
Well, I think one of the things we used to do, which has not happened in a couple of years, and maybe it's because of COVID or whatever. Um. Terry, one of the things we we used to do was when we prepared a budget. We invited finance committee to join the admin committee. Um, to go over those things and Stephanie, I think you were on finance at the time. Um. It so that's one way of of getting to some of these questions by involving more of the uh, council people. But remember that a lot of the numbers that Terry puts in. Um, comes up the pipeline through each of your committees, boards, commissions and stuffs, stuff like that. Through you. So that's your opportunity to to have an impact on what your boards and commissions. Are um, are adding or subtracting from the budget.
And most of the, I know Matt asked for, what was it, like three thousand dollars something? They get donations and different things to their like. The those things are budgeted, most of them receive the same amount of funds or every other year they may ask for a thousand dollars more. I'm talking about a ongoing increase. We bring on someone, that's two percent. Next year, the year after, regardless of what happens, regardless of COVID nineteen shows up. This is, this is, this is what's happening. And I just need us all to, we should have an input on that. Matt, like Matt said, he didn't, he didn't know. About your inter, it wasn't an intern, wasn't an intern paid intern like it's.
But I think it was brought to council at one point.
Yeah, it was and I hate to have, we hire someone and I would hate. For me to vote no on a salary ordinance for someone that I feel that that line. That line could go be go to a firefighter. Or go to Phil additional laborer that he wanted. I'm sorry. This is the these.
I'm not following you. When it's all of these new hires.
In my experience, that's when someone, they're just hired and then it's put on the salary ordinance.
Right.
And that when everyone knew.
Which has to be voted on.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I would hate to vote no. For someone that has already went through the process. And um, that I felt could have been that salary could have been used in another department. Or maybe we didn't need to fill that position.
Uh, Elsie, are you raising your hand?
I want to go to sleep. I'm tired. Um, so I'm not going to be a good contributor to this conversation. We're all exhausted. Um, but. I'm trying to uh, to get clarity. I stutter when I'm tired. Um. My department is, well, my portfolio sucks up all the oxygen in the room, so to speak, because it's it's the big one. It's the police and it's the fire. And um. Are you saying like, say, we are now, we know that volunteerism is a thing of the past. Globally. People are just not into volunteering anymore and that's why we constantly need an additional fire. Fighters in our fire department because we wouldn't have anyone to cover, you know, to cover the shifts and what have you. And so that's why we're looking for a full-time and a part-time person. Because we just lost a full-time person that we have, so we need to replace the full-time person that was there because of volunteerism is. Pretty much non-existent, you know, it's there, but it's it's not like you're getting probes of people coming in to volunteer. We're putting in for a part-time person. And last year, we uh, we needed more officers because we were totally under, under. The number that we should be and we were understaffed and had we not. Brought people on board, it would have cost us more in overtime, so it'll wind up costing us much more money. In my situation. Do you want all of that to come to the general council before we even go out and vet and have this conversation with these folks? That's what you're saying?
Well, I was saying certain essential roles.
Oh, well, no, but that's essential, you know, like. Being a fireman because we don't have enough people.
I'm going to, I'm going to use some of my um, prerogatives.
Wait, 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 wait. Excuse me. One second, Mayor.
Wait, Elsie, we're.
No, she was saying essential roles. So that's the person you're talking about that should. Everybody should have a, I say so and get the.
The reason I wanted to cut this short is this could go on for hours. Um, so what I'm going to suggest. Um, is that we have an admin committee meeting, invite Stephanie to the meeting. And let the committee work things through and then we'll bring the uh, recommendation to the council. So Terry, you'll you'll have somebody set up that meeting. Um, may have a motion to adjourn.
Well, one last meeting regard, one last comment regarding the utility budget. I know the cost that you were saying for the fourth quarter, Terry, the increase that we're projecting. Um, is it part like, I know I had read that like last year when I had made that announcement at the council meeting. Is it possible that we can't? I know it's only like two utility companies. But do we have to use uh, Middlesex water?
Yeah, we have a ten-year contract.
Ten-year contract was.
Right.
And they were the less expensive.
And and they were forty percent cheaper than the next one.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, one of the major issues with and we did, I did want, I'm glad you mentioned the water budget. Sorry, Mayor, just give me two minutes. Um, one of our big increases was not was in Middlesex, but it was the purchase of water, which there are. Primary, you know, we have to do a lot of uh, major, major work if we were going to go with a different uh. Water provider in terms of infrastructure upgrades to interconnections and things like that. Um, but there are, they got a a large rate increase from the Board of Public Utilities. Which has gotten passed down, which is, I would say, the large reason that and our inability to. Uh, collect during tax sale, water and sewer due to the moratorium. That we're, we cut it a little too close for comfort. We were able to close the year. We were solvent, but it was too tight. We're going to need the increase. We're not going to do what we've done in the past. And and hope cross our fingers and hold our breath, so.
So I'm calling uh, for a motion to end this meeting. And Terry, for you to set up an admin meeting to review the budget. I know you're on a time.
I will do a special one maybe next week.
Okay.
So we have time.
Okay. Second.
I said.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.